Good afternoon. Thank you all for being here. At this time, I'll call to order the regular meeting of the La Quinta City Council Meeting for Tuesday, April 15, 2014. May we please have the roll call? Susan.
Council members, Evans.
Present.
Franklin.
Here.
Henderson.
Present.
Osborne.
Here.
Mayor Eadle.
Here. At this time, I'd ask that you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your hand over your heart and repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item on the agenda today is public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on an item which is on the agenda, I'd ask that you please fill out a request to speak for them. It's an orange form. It's in the back of the room. And give it to our city clerk. Anyone at this time wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so. Seeing none, then we'll move forward to confirmation of agenda. Are there any changes, additions, or deletions by staff?
No, there are none.
By council members?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
On the consent calendar, item number seven, I would ask that we move item number seven to business item number five, please.
Okay. We'll move on to, there's no presentations or written communications this evening, so I'll ask for approval of minutes of April 1, 2014.
So moved second.
Moved and, moved in second, twice. So we're covered. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. We'll move on now to the consent calendar.
Move consent and amend it. Second.
Moved in second. Any comments? Seeing none? Please vote.
I'm sorry, that didn't take. Would you vote again, please?
Please vote.
It only took, I'm gonna reset one more time. Okay, try again.
Please vote. There it comes. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Next item on the agenda is our business session. The first one is approve Silver Rock Resort fiscal year 2014-15 annual plan, including purchase and lease maintenance equipment. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor Steve Howlett. Our golf and carts manager is going to give his report today.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. This item is the 2014-15 annual plan for the Silver Rock Golf operations as prepared by Landmark Golf Management. The annual plan is presented to City Council each year to show the projected revenues, expenses, and level of service for the Silver Rock Golf operations. This current, this current annual plan has a projected operating loss of just over $82,000. A component of this revenue loss and expenditure reduction is a result of the CVWD Canal relocation project. This annual plan also has a request for the purchase of maintenance equipment for the Silver Rock Golf Course. There are maintenance equipment that has reached their five- and 10-year useful life, and staff is recommending that the items with a 10-year useful life be purchased or be replaced by funds from the Silver Rock Capital Reserves, and that the equipment with a shorter life of five years be leased and the expenses be paid out of the golf course operations. By leasing the shorter-term equipment, this will save money in the capital reserve funds. In looking at this, staff has determined that we are going to put together a projection of the lifecycle costs for all of the capital items at Silver Rock. That way, we have a good annual estimate of the funds that will be needed in the capital reserves and how much revenue we're going to need to fund the capital reserves. Also, in this annual plan, there is marketing, both traditional and digital. The traditional being TV, radio, and print, and digital being the website, the Internet, and Facebook page. The details for the marketing plan are listed on pages 21 and 22, and the marketing budget is just under $240,000. This concludes the report for the Silver Rock Annual Plan. Staff is available, as well as Landmark's staff and a representative from John Deere should you have any technical questions about the equipment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Questions of staff? Kristi?
So, the last time we talked about leasing versus purchasing, there was to be no leasing. Que pasa?
The last time we discussed, four and a half years ago, when this item was brought before us, we had a healthy reserves in the, in the city budget. And it's always better to purchase than lease, but now with the cuts that we have made-
That's an opinion, by the way.
What's that?
That's an opinion.
Well, it's, whatever council determines, but staff looked at our capital reserves for the Silver Rock Golf operations, which we currently have just over $500,000. And we looked at, okay, do we want to purchase all this equipment with the Silver Rock Capital Reserves, which could be done, but then there would be no money available should there be any unexpected expenses. By doing a combination of purchase and lease, the longer-term equipment can be purchased and save about half the money that's currently in the capital reserve and also save on long-term interest charges. And then the short-term items for five years can be leased in a similar fashion as the golf carts currently do, in which the cost for that equipment is absorbed in the golf course operations.
Okay. I just find it a little quizzical that there was, last time, I guess, that this came up, you were attempting to flatline your budget, or save money, or whatever. And yet, you're telling me you had all this money in the reserve account. So, I'm a little, that, that being a reason for purchasing instead of leasing, I'm just wondering why now we're leasing.
Again, just the funds that are available in both the, the city's general and the Silver Rock Capital Reserves.
Okay, and do we have enough money, does the golf course have enough money to do the leasing and purchasing without going into the general fund?
In this recommendation, it does. In this combination, we're leasing around $300,000 of it and purchasing $200,000 of it. That leaves some money in the capital fund reserve and then ties the rest into the operation budget. And we looked at a variety of alternatives. We talked to the finance director about his thoughts on that, what would be the best. And we feel like this is a reasonable approach to be able to fund this and make this work for us. And, and I don't know if, if, going back to what we did four years ago, we actually took the money to purchase that out of the general fund reserves. We did not take it out of the capital reserve fund. And that's the distinction there. We didn't feel like we could come to you and ask you, can we take this from our general fund reserves because it's been so affected by the recent changes. So, looking at what we needed to do right now, we felt like that was the best option to bring before you.
Okay. I just do remember comments last time to the effect that, well, golf courses don't lease equipment. They just purchase it. That's what I was told, so. Right, Randy? Basically, that's what you said at the podium. I'm just, I'm just wondering why they changed, but I'll accept that.
Well, we had our conversation with, what, what should we do about that? Because it's a big number and it adds quite a bit of expense to the operations of the golf course, and it's six of one and half a dozen of the other. And our, our thinking was, we didn't want to knock down our capital reserves to nothing. Felt like that we should probably keep something in there just in case we-
Well, sure, I understand that.
And, and our thinking, and I recall John Falconer talking about this issue with us and saying, if you can afford to buy it, go ahead. And I think at that time, the feeling was that we could, and that's why that recommendation was made. So, I think that's, that's why we're seeking this. We feel like we don't have the same funds available to us.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, without getting too technical, the leases that we're looking at for the shorter-term equipment, is that a finance lease or an operating lease? Where we give it back at the end of that period, or a dollar buyout at the end of that period?
Yes, there's no dollar buyout on that, and for that, there would be no depreciation value on it.
Just a straight lease.
Operating lease, just like the golf carts.
Okay. The, the operating budget, or the maintenance budget as proposed here, who prepared this?
It would have been Landmark, Randy, and his staff.
Then I'd like to ask Landmark to come up. I have a couple of questions on the budget if I could.
Sure. Randy?
Good afternoon.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Now, in, in this budget and the proposal, we're looking at the back nine being out of function for about four months it looks like. So, in, in your maintenance and your operating standpoint for this year, are you looking, is there going to be a cost reduction, so to speak, in holding off on that back nine for that period of time?
Yes, there will be. So, the months that are going to be savings will be July, August, and September. Obviously, for October, we're going to be in overseeing, so we'll be fully staffed. But for July, August, and September, we're doing a 15 percent reduction in labor-
Okay.
Across, not just for maintenance, but for all departments.
Okay. And in regards to CVWD and the canal, is everything ready to go? We've got all the arrangements worked out on how they're going to do it and when they're going to do it?
May 1?
Put it while they're doing it?
Yeah, Willie and I just attended a CVWD pre-construction meeting on Monday, and so they're all systems go for May 1st.
Okay. Do you have an estimate on, on what the reduced amount of maintenance cost was for those three months, or?
Yes. Approximately for, for the three months, it's about a $20,000 reduction in labor for July and August and September.
Okay. And hopefully, water and whatever else?
No, that's just labor. So, we still plan on maintaining the golf course like we normally would. Obviously, we're not going to do the same mowing levels, but we're still going to fertilize it. We're still gonna, we still have to keep it healthy.
Okay.
We don't want to do anything that's going to jeopardize the health of the turf.
Okay. All right. And then it looked like you're raising the average round from about $80 up, what, was it 82 or something like, 80? Yeah, so you, are you going to be raising the non-residential rates a little bit to-
There, there is no plan to raise any rates this year at all.
Okay.
In fact, we'll be reducing rates come May 1st, because obviously, we're just going to be nine holes.
Right.
With the option of players still being able to play the front nine twice for '18.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have. Thanks, Randy.
Randy, while you're up there, just a question. And I'm sorry, but I haven't played the course in a while. Have you changed the, the sand traps to a more dense so that every time the wind blows, it doesn't blow the sand to India?
Yes, we did. And Willie could probably speak on this better than I could, but from the storm that we had back last August-
Yeah.
We had to replace all of the bunker sand, and we replaced it with this-
Is it a 50/50?
A coarser sand.
It's a, it's a sand that actually joins together, so it won't blow out as easily as the other sand.
Yeah, because that's an expense that we shouldn't have to go through.
Correct.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Randy. I'm sorry.
You're welcome.
Good. Questions of staff?
No, I have, I have a couple of questions relating to the big corn sheet and fencing, but I don't, I don't know whether it would be appropriate now, or whether we should pick it up at the end of this conversation. So, go on and finish where we are, and then let me ask-
Okay.
Yeah, comments or questions?
Okay. Good. Well, why don't you ask a question, Sarah?
You know, the more you read, and the more you hear, and the more you think you know more, the more complicated it gets. But I really think that the city should take a pretty firm stand on this issue. It's, it's my understanding that in Rancho Mirage, well, one place in particular, and at other places around the country, there, there were allowed to be some watering holes. Now, I want to be careful with that, too, because I'm not suggesting we build flyaways. We don't want, you know, we don't want to create little ponds for birds that then we have to take care of it for the birds. But these are something that, there, there is a, there is a mechanism for, for that kind of thing. And if, if the water district has to fence the canal, and my concern is, if this was possible, is finding out soon enough so that, because the ponds, they have little turnouts in the fence, and they would get water from the canal, and as I understand, it, as the, as the canal rises and lowers, the water in the little pond will do the same.
Mm-hmm.
So, I, I think we ought to be, you know, at least looking at that, looking to see if that's a possibility, if, if it's creative enough, if BLM could settle down long enough to listen to something besides knowing what they think they know about everything. Maybe there's new things. And, and then, you know, maybe we would, so they could still come down to the canal and have water, we, it wouldn't be, but now, there could be issues because of the length of it and the length of what the, the WBDB has to put in fence, which is not this entire area, because it, so they could still build around the ends.
Mm-hmm.
But I'd like to throw that out there for an idea to be worked on during the time that you are having negotiations on this.
Sure.
Terry, you brought up a, a good point, and I've read it in the paper in regards to Rancho Mirage. Well, Rancho Mirage just fenced it off there, right by Highway 111 to protect the sheep. And I've ran into them a couple of times when driving through, years ago, and that's all they did. They didn't fence off all the mountains. They just fenced off right in that area to keep them from coming out onto Highway 111, is what they did, so.
Later on, when we're talking about Sebag, I've got some comments regarding the meeting with CBCC and their study, and I'll bring that up.
Yeah.
And we, we have to also remember that Tradition paid BLM $250,000 to be relieved of building that fence.
Sure.
So, whoever's coming back now with the bright idea that Tradition should be building in the fence, even if the Tradition people over there don't remember that, I remember it.
Yes. But, Chapman, David, you got involved in that. You bet.
The, the area that they're talking about for fencing starts out at the quarry and goes all the way around the tow to Traditions.
I don't know whether Quarry paid anything into them or not, but I know Tradition did.
Yep.
So, you know, we need to have a list of things that we know, and ammunition, if you will.
Yeah.
Edie, on this deficit operating loss of $82,000, how do you make that up? Where does that come from? How do you?
It doesn't get made up from the Silver Rock operation. It actually comes from the budget, the general fund budget.
Okay.
And if you recall, last year, when we talked about needing to shore up some of the, excuse me, needing to shore up some of those losses from the time that the golf course, the canal was going to be starting in May, we needed to do that. So, we're going to have to do it again until we're able to complete the project at the end of October.
Okay.
Yeah. Good. Okay. Thanks, Randy.
Okay, thank you.
Linda, I got your comments.
Comments? Sure.
I recall the conversation on capital versus lease, and I think that was the time when we were looking at decreasing the operating expenses, and it was a large equipment, and that was a chunk because of parts and pieces we were trying to acquire to accommodate this large equipment. And clearly, now, on the, on the longer term, the 10-year plus, it makes sense if we can just acquire junk, because you're not going to have to worry about that replacement for some time. We'll be in a better position, I think, by then. So, you know, I look at the combo, it's very creative, you know, very good, and still being able to reserve the 2% into our reserves and save that is prudent. It looks like the revenue, I think, Lee, your question was, the revenue per round is going up in the projections-
Right.
From 80 to 84.
Exactly.
And that's because of wage issues, right? Not necessarily round increases? Does it look like outside service wage increases? Is that what's causing that?
Well, the, I don't know if the average rate factors expenses. I'm not sure exactly what you're referring to. You're talking about the average rate?
It says average projected revenue of 84.25 per round versus 80.10 last year-
Okay, so that, that's a combination of green fees, merchandise, all the revenue components.
Takes, takes all revenue, yeah.
All revenue, yeah. So, the reason why that's probably higher is because we're going to have less rounds, I would imagine. I'm not sure exactly. I'll have to go back and look at the calculation.
It does show less rounds, right.
Yeah.
That would make sense.
About 5,000 less rounds, right.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. And I just wanted to comment, because I was vocal on the marketing budget and just the marketing plan last year. Very impressed, 60% online reservations being made. Clearly, you got your bang for the buck on a lot of the digital social, and it looks like you're going to head in that direction again, and, and with the new app. I mean, I brag about that a lot, so, nice job, and-
Thank you.
Very good job. Thank you.
Just one quick comment from me, too, is we'll be looking at using your expertise when we get involved with hotels on Silver Rock, and that is how we're going to handle that problem and that.
Round divvying up. [laughing].
Thank you. If I could just make a comment, Mr. Mayor? Thank you. One, on the advertising, I think you guys are doing a great job in the advertising. I really do. And it just shows the amount of rounds you guys are selling out there, 45,000 rounds, when everything's working. It's phenomenal. And, but, a good point about last year, at budget time, I think we put in about $700,000, roughly, for these types of costs and this operating loss. So, we budgeted for this last year for this exact thing.
With our surplus.
So, thank you.
Okay.
Good. Yeah, and speaking of advertising, I watched the Masters over the weekend, and there were little clips come in. This is brought to you by Silver Rock in La Quinta. [laughing] You bet. You bet. Good.
Like to make a motion?
Please.
Sure, okay. Move approval of Silver Rock Resort fiscal year 2014-15 annual plan, including purchase and lease of maintenance equipment.
Been moved in second, unless there's any comments or questions, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. And then, okay, we'll move on to item number two on the business session, and that's approve a cooperative agreement with the County of Riverside to provide fire protection, fire prevention, rescue, and medical emergency services. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Chief Gray and myself will be co-presenting this item. So, what we'll be running through briefly is a couple of items. Chief Gray will provide an overview of fire services in La Quinta. We'll go through the new cooperative agreement, talk about costs of service, and then turn it back over for questions and comments. So, with that said, Chief Gray.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Like, here in La Quinta, we have three fire stations with 24 full-time firefighters, a few of them being paramedics on the engines.
I'm not sure your lighting's going well.
Testing, testing. Sorry about that. That's better. Here in La Quinta, we have three fire stations, 24 full-time firefighters. A few of those are paramedics. We have paramedic engines, a battalion chief, and one fire safety specialist. We're in a local cooperative agreement to share Indio Truck Company with the county, La Quinta and Coachella, so they respond into the city as well. We have a volunteer reserve program for training and to augment resources, and we have Explorer posts, as well as support services, COM, IT, and the Emergency Command Center. We do have paramedics on the engine, and the reason for this is fire engines respond and get on scene quicker the majority of the time than the ambulance. And instead of having the public wait for basic life support, they can start advanced life support, and when the ambulance and the transporting agency gets there, it's an additional paramedic to help with the critical skills it takes to provide advanced This shows a graph of what we did in 2013. It shows that we're an all-risk fire department. The majority of our calls are medical aids. We also respond to public assist, such as falls, water salvage, smoke detector activations, vehicle fires, wildland fires, rescues. Even though the majority of the calls are medicals, 5%, less than 5% are fires, but that is where we get all of our fun.
Thank you, Jody. So, the proposed agreement, what it does is it maintains existing service levels in the current agreement. We are proposing to upgrade firefighter two position to firefighter two paramedic. As Jody was indicating, it provides more of those advanced life support services on the front end. Also, because we have a great deal of amount of calls that are medical aid, it's an opportune time to upgrade the position versus filling a full position. In addition, what this agreement does is it maintains our existing fire tax credit. So, this is important, because the fire tax credit is funded by property tax revenue, as well as redevelopment pass-through funds. So, we all know that redevelopment has been dissolved in California, but the state continues to permit, permit the pass-through of these funds, which is important to fund the fire tax credit. So, this credit is essentially revenue that comes in specifically for fire services, and this next chart here shows three important lines. So, the line at the top is the revenue we receive on an annual basis. Fire tax revenue ties to the economy, so during the good years, we receive more; during the not-so-good years, it declines. What we're seeing from our current fiscal year to next, we're also projecting an increase in terms of this because of the improving economy. The line right beneath it, the red line, is our, is our budgeted numbers based upon the budget. And right beneath it is our actuals. So, the fire department has always run under budget, so you'll see this line always trailing underneath it. At the end of the year, we request reimbursement for the city's fire services from this fire tax credit, and whatever we don't utilize, it goes back into the credit. So, while that's, that's some good news in terms of we're able to absorb increases and the tax credits still exist, what we are seeing is an overall rate increase to our baseline level of service. Now, we contract with the county, the county in turn contracts with Cal Fire, and so some of the contract, well, all of the contract increases are all as a result of the Cal Fire arrangement. So, increases in state healthcare costs as their state employees, as well as the Cal increase. So, baseline services rates continue to increase. However, we're still actively monitoring and making sure that we're on trend and holding expenditures down the line. But with that said, we're more than happy to answer any questions, and staff is recommending approval of the agreement.
Good. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Jody. Comments?
Questions?
Yes, questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regarding to, well, first, in regards to our last discussion, we were just talking about capital budgets. Do you guys have a capital budget to replace engines within certain periods of time? So, you have funds available when you do need to buy a new engine?
Are you talking about the fire department?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, you guys, we have a program. It's part of the, I'm not sure what it's called. I'm drawing a blank. But yes, you pay in approximately, I believe, $19,000 a year, and then they rotate the engines as far as mileage. The busier stations will get, they'll, I'm not speaking right. They, they move the engines around, so one station is not getting all the mileage. Once they reach a certain point, they'll move the engines around, and when they're ready at a certain mileage point, they replace them. Right now, we're in a process where we're going to be going out for bid for additional engines. And they watch that on a regional, a county-wide regional program. I can't remember the name of it for the life of me, but yeah, that's all in there. They'll never come to you and say, oh, you need to come up with this amount of money. That's why you gave the equipment to the county to take care of, to maintain, and you pay a per-year fee of, I believe, it's $19,000.
That's the cooperative truck use agreement?
No, the truck, the truck agreement is, we pay 12.5% into that cooperative agreement, and that gives us full access anytime we have an emergency where we need a truck company, which could be a, any kind of structure fire, any kind of multi-level fire, any kind of cut and rescue. They have all the advanced equipment.
That's for the ladder truck, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
And my, my other question is, in regards to the firefighter two paramedic, I mean, for a number of years now, we've had it where each station has a firefighter paramedic on staff at all points of time. So, there's, I mean, within, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there was three designated- I believe there was three designated people per engine, and one's gonna be a paramedic?
Correct. We have relief shifts, and then we, sometimes we have an over, in the battalion, we have three fire apparatus engineers that are paramedics as well. They are mainly to oversee the program, to assist, but if we have a call where it's like a multi-incident, five-car traffic collision, their job is to be the IC. If it's a fire, they have to pump the engine. They have multiple responsibilities. We would like to upgrade to the paramedic position, the attrition. The more paramedics on scene, the better, because there are multiple critical tasks that one paramedic to do, say, on a full arrest where somebody's heart stopped. They have to innovate. They have to start an IV line, have to hook them to the heart rate monitor. They have to measure narcotics. They have to administer them. They have to look at the heart rate monitor, possibly shock. There's multiple steps, and to have that extra set of hands that's able to do those critical functions, we'd really like to do that. We're asking for that now. Instead of asking for an additional position, which would be maybe a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, we had a regular firefighter leave the battalion and go elsewhere in the county, so we have a vacant position. And it would cost us twenty-three thousand dollars more versus that whole cost. So, it's essentially upgrading a position instead of asking for an additional. We're not asking for more bodies. We're just asking to upgrade.
Okay, okay. Well, I just want to say, I think you guys are doing an outstanding job. I really do. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Questions?
Yes, I have one. I didn't get to ask it this morning or yesterday morning, whenever we had a fire public safety meeting. I think you were there when you were talking about CV link, and it was brought up that the fire, as well as the lease, are need to get on board as far as looking at the beginning stages of the engineering plans for where and how that link is going to run, and making sure that your equipment can get in or in on or out of there at the same time.
Be involved.
If you're familiar with that program?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't think, I'm not familiar with that program. I wasn't there yesterday.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I could talk to you afterwards about it.
No, yeah, well, I'm sure that they'll be in touch with you, because they're gonna put a group together to make sure all of that happens.
Yeah. They're just getting money now. Until they get the money, they can't do anything.
Are there any union implications with switching out the firefighter-two with the paramedic position?
Are there any what?
Union issues? Do you have to deal with any associations? None of that? Okay, anytime we can get another paramedic.
No, once you approve it, we'll go through the position, and I'll request to fill it. I'll just need a letter from the city. I have to go through our administration, and they'll do all the paperwork and go get the list of people who are available.
Yeah, I think it's outstanding that if we can elevate yet another firefighter to a paramedic status, we're doing more to save a life in the field as a first responder. And that time is, time is tissue loss, brain loss, all those things. So, I support that a hundred percent.
Thank you.
Kristi?
Actually, this is for Kathy, I think. The indemnification provisions of the contract, you raised some alarms. Play on words there.
Yeah, the, on page one hundred and fifteen of the staff report is the language that I was concerned about. And it specifically says that the county is going to be responsible for the services the county provides without limitation under the contract. And it goes on to say, with regard to its subcontractors, it's responsible if they're negligent. And I said, because the county doesn't really provide service other than administrative services, so it wasn't as if the city would ever be sued because of something the county did, we're obviously more concerned about the county subcontractor CAL FIRE. So, I ask that CAL FIRE be added as a reference to the county being liable for any of the services by the county or CAL FIRE, whether they're negligent or not. Because if you put a negligence requirement in, there can't, that can be a pretty severe limitation, because you often don't know whether negligence exists until you get to the end of a lawsuit. So, we have had discussions with the county. The original suggestion was rejected. We've had some follow-up discussions, and the county council is in contact with the risk management. At the end of the day, you know, in order to utilize your fire fund and all that, I think you'd wanna go forward with this. However, if you approve it today, I'd like you to add that the city, you know, subject to any further changes on the indemnification that the city attorney and the city manager enter into. I'm not sure if we'll get the county there or not, because my understanding is everybody else is willing to sign this contract, and they don't really wanna change it for us. But we're gonna try to get them to change it.
Okay, so, we can go ahead and approve it tonight, and you're fine with that, given that condition?
Right.
And if we can, make the change fine. But if not, you're okay with it?
I, if I were in your shoes, I'd still approve. If you're happy with the business point of it, I wouldn't use that as a reason not to approve this.
Okay, good. Please bear with me for a minute. Last Wednesday, I played in a tournament at PJ West with the Marine Corps from Pendleton, Twenty-Nine Palms, and Miramar, and that. And we were playing the Weiskopf course out there. And unfortunately, I didn't know, I was on the fifteenth hole, and this gentleman was on the second hole, and he had a heart attack. And of course, the, his teammates and the Marines, they were giving him CPR and that, and they called nine-one-one. And of course, our, what we've always said is, any place in the city of La Quinta, we can have a paramedic within five minutes of the, of where the problem is. And I didn't know anything about it, but when we finished playing golf and I got into the clubhouse, I was jumped by a couple of people saying it took them fifteen minutes to get to this gentleman. And of course, I was upset. I didn't know what the background was. All I knew is he had a heart attack. It took fifteen minutes to get there. So, as soon as I got finished playing golf, and we had the lunch with the Marines and that, I came back and I called, talked to Frank, and I said, we need to find out from Jody just exactly what transpired. Jody got right on it. She got back to me with a two-page respondent. And we found out it wasn't the paramedic's fault, but it was the gate where they come into the golf course and that. And we have several gates at PJ West. And there was some confusion there, and it took them the extra ten minutes to be able to get back out to the individual. Well, this upset me, and I was at a shindig Saturday night, and the management from the hotel and the golf courses was there. And I glommed onto them real quickly, and I said, we need to work together with the homeowners' association, with the golf course management and that, so that when we have a problem like this, that when the paramedic show up, there's somebody there to take them directly out on the golf course. Because it's obvious that paramedics don't, they're not, maybe not golfers, they don't know where it is. Somebody's gotta direct them. And this, this has to be changed. And I've talked to Jody about this, and she's in full concurrence with what we need to do so that we educate those people at every one of the gates, when you go into a golf course, that they're able to take those paramedics right to where the problem is. And that we can't afford to have people having heart attacks and not be able to get them in a reasonable length of time and that. So, thank you, Jody, and your staff and that, because initially, I was blaming them, and it wasn't them that had the problem. It was the golf course itself and that. So, thank you, Jody. Your staff did a wonderful job, and we need to correct this. And I think it's in the mill now that we will be getting education at these gates.
Absolutely. Thank you. Last, I checked, he's still in ICU.
Unfortunately, yeah, he's in bad shape. Okay, I think we've got everything. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the cooperative agreement with County Riverside to provide fire protection, fire prevention, rescue, and medical emergency services, and provide discretion to the city manager and city attorney to finalize any language verbiage necessary to further protect us.
Been moved in second, unless there's any questions or comments. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to the third item on our business session, and that's adopt a resolution amending and restating rules of procedures for council meetings and related functions and activities. Resolution two thousand fourteen, or two thousand fourteen and oh-one-three-one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, honorable council members. This is something that the council does periodically. It has, a thorough examination has not been done since nineteen ninety-five. So, at a council meeting last month, you formed an ad hoc committee of Councilmember Evans and Councilmember Franklin, and I was the support staff. And staff went through and compared the rules, council rules of procedure with state law, and brought all those sections up to code. And then, the discretionary items were discussed and reviewed by the ad hoc committee. So, we'll go over those discretionary sections, because bringing it up to state code, we don't have a lot of choice as to rejecting it or accepting it. So, let's first look at the meeting time, the regular meeting times for council. To allow flexibility, what we did was take the set meeting for closed sessions, which you, in the past, you had at three PM. And, you know, we had some latitude. We'd have to call it a special meeting to move it beyond that, earlier than that. So, we took the closed session, and we took the public hearing portion, where you had set it always at seven PM for public hearings. Research state law to make sure that it wasn't required that we preset a time, and it is not. So, to allow you flexibility, in the rules, we have now closed sessions can occur any time before the meeting, between three and four. The meeting will, the regular meeting will start at four. Or, it can occur any time within the regular meeting hours before adjournment. So, you have great flexibility now as to when that is. Now, the public would know the timing of the meeting, the closed session, the regular meeting, and the public hearing, because we post that in advance. And so, let's talk about the public hearings. You have traditionally, well, they've moved around over time. Most recently, they've been set for seven PM. So, and you have the situation where you have your regular meeting often ends earlier, and there's a delay between your seven o'clock public hearing. Since it's not necessary to preset when every public hearing would be, we aren't doing that. We'll leave it open if you approve. And we can set the public hearing based on how long the agenda is, because most public hearings, you have to notice it ten days in advance in the newspaper. And by then, we'll know about how big the agenda will be, so how long it will take you to get through. It's a guess, of course, but we can judge pretty well. And the interest in the public hearing by the public. So, we can, we can, many of them may still be at seven o'clock, but if that's not necessary, we can move it up. And we would, we would notice that in the ten-day notice if one's required. If it isn't required because of the subject matter, then, then it would be noticed on the agenda, which is a seventy-two-hour notification.
If I could ask within that, how far up could we move a public hearing?
Well, you can move it, you have your regular meeting starting at four, so it couldn't be before four, but it could be as early as four o'clock.
Just latitude.
It's latitude. It's unlikely, because you're gonna have minutes, you're gonna have consent calendar. You're most likely gonna have some sort of business item. So, it's unlikely. But you could. And if it's an item that the public is, is, we anticipate that there'll be public interest, we wouldn't wanna do it as early as four o'clock.
Time-wise, this is, no time can be set, set it.
How soon for what?
A public hearing item can be done prior to seven o'clock in the evening. It can be moved as early as four, basically.
Yeah, okay. The next, the next item you'd be interested in is just a simple mechanical thing. At one point, apparently, there was a public bulletin board in the front by the fountain. That bulletin board was removed some time ago. It was pretty decrepit when I got here in oh-nine. So, I took that out. We do overpost according to state regulations. The state requires us to post on our website, and in one, how do they say?
Public place.
Conspicuous public location. So, we post in multiple public conspicuous locations, as you know, as well as inside City Hall and inside the senior center, at State of Brothers outside, at the post office outside, and of course, on our website.
We're covered.
So, we're covered. We're covered. The next thing we talked about was teleconferencing. Now, this is, this is a new item, and more and more city clerks find that this is necessary, because council members are on the move and are requesting this more and more. So, I got some samples from different cities, and the ad hoc committee looked at, looked at those. And of course, we have to follow the Brown Act, so that's what a lot of the paragraphs in there are about. In fact, A through E is all about the Brown Act, and then requirements for me to comply with that Brown Act. So, the discretionary items were three that the ad hoc committee talked about. And feel free, committee members, to add to whatever I say on the subject. The first item is only one council member per meeting may attend by teleconferencing. This was done for practical matters. You can imagine, when you're teleconferencing, you're trying to, the presiding officer is trying to manage an unseen location that they can only hear on the telephone. So, if you had several of those going on, it would be quite difficult for the presiding officer. And it would be difficult, there is a Brown Act requirement, for everyone to hear, the council member and any members of the public who may be in the room with the council member. So, the audio would be very difficult if it was more than one. And you would, you would have an equipment cost, too, because you'd have to have the equipment for each remote location. So, the thought was one per meeting was probably manageable. So, that's what we set down here. Then, we talked about how many meetings per year, and came up with a maximum of twice per council member per year, thinking that, you know, this council, in the years I've been here, I could count how many times they've missed. So, you know, and the intent for all council members is to be physically present. So, we thought, but it's unrealistic to think during a council member's year that they wouldn't have need to be elsewhere. So, the two seem to be a reasonable amount. The third thing was that when a council member notified the city clerk that he or she was going to attend by teleconferencing, that the city clerk would then in turn immediately let the others know, so that they would know they would not be eligible to be teleconferenced into that same meeting. So, that's the teleconferencing section. The next is a small change, an order of business. To clarify it for the public, instead of just putting on our agenda "public comment," we could head the matter "public comment" on matters not on the agenda. So, the, and many cities do this, so it's clear to the public when they speak on matters that are not on the agenda.
Don't we already do that?
No, on the agenda, we just, it just says "public comment."
You mean on the agenda?
To write it out for people. Yeah.
Verbally, I say this.
Yes, you verbally tell people, but it would be written out on the agenda, so there would be no question as to when that occurs. We thought we'd move the approval of minutes into the consent count. We thought we'd move the approval of minutes into the consent calendar. There, there, it's very rare when anyone has a comment on the minutes, and we could eliminate that section and a few minutes of your time by just putting it in there. Terry reminded me that it has been in consent calendar in the past, so we're, we'll, we thought we'd move it back in there.
But I would request that you make it the first item.
Okay, we'll make it the first item.
Because I pull the agenda and the minutes, and it's easier than going all through them, to see where they are.
Okay, easy. The next is, you have three sections, written communication, presentations, and announcements as, as agenda item sequences. And that very, very often, there, there is nothing in these sections, so we, so we thought we'd group them together instead of having separate sections. And there is a statement in the, in the order of business agenda section that majority consent is needed to take an item out of order. Well, that's been deleted because it seemed unnecessary for that to be in there. What seemed more practical in the operation of the meeting is to give the presiding officer the flexibility to move things around should he or she see that it's time for the public hea, the public hearing to occur, so let's pull that down and put off the other things, or if a council member is requesting for things to be moved around. So, in practical matters, in the way that the, the council works, the pers, we thought we'd make it official that the presiding officer would have that flexibility. Next, we have delivery of agenda, simple change to what is actually done. It was changed from Friday to Thursday delivery. Public comment, we deleted the section, the sentence that went into that any council member may direct any matter raised during public comments that's not on the agenda, may direct it to staff, or direct that the matter be placed on the next agenda. We thought that, as many cities do, we should have a section in the procedures for how, formally, how does a council member add an item to the agenda. So that's addressed in the next section, two point nine. This is new, new in, in its current format. It's been formalized, and again, I, I looked at a few different cities to see how they did it, and offered some options to the ad hoc committee. So, this sets out that any council member can add an item to the agenda if it's going to be talked about at length and discussed extensively, then it really should be on the written agenda, posted agenda. If it's, if it's a minor, minor item, like, there are council member items that you do now, reporting on, on events that you had gone to, or, or bills that may be pending, not necessary. So if, if an item is only going to be discussed, then the council member can ask that the item be put on the agenda at the meeting, or contact the city manager and ask that the item be put on the agenda. But if the item requires extensive staff time, staff research, or requests a vote of council, or a vote to commit resources of the city, then the item would need a majority vote of council to go forward with. So that's how it's set up. And then the third way would be for the mayor, the city manager, or the city attorney to request that something be put on the agenda. Now, the city manager and the city attorney is, is a common practice. They're your direct employees, you would want them to, to have the ability to build the agenda. The mayor is something that some cities do, it's discretionary, if you wanna add that in there. In our case, our mayor is a directly elected presiding officer, so we put it in thinking that may be something we would want. So those are the primary changes, discretionary changes. And please, if the ad hoc committee has something to add, please do so, or I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Susan. Questions of staff? Ad hoc committee?
I just have one addition, and if you go back to the, going back to the teleconferencing component, because that was much discussion over, well, the, the initial changes are on one twenty-five, but if you go to the red line version, which is page three of nineteen at the bottom, the, the last sentence or provision D, basically because of the compliance requirement with Brown Act, it's, there's still a one week notification. So it can't be where, for example, and I'm stuck at my other employer on Tuesday at three thirty, and I call Frank saying, hey, I've gotta take this meeting teleconference. That's not an option. So there still needs to be a one week notification to the city clerk, so that the rest of us are made aware, and, and plan for that in advance, because of the logistics necessary. And we had discussion over video conferencing versus teleconferencing, knowing that we didn't want extensive cost issues. We did kind of try a little bit of teleconferencing while we were doing the commission appointments, and had some folks on the phone. So, technical difficulties at times, but it is still a one week requirement, so that will help control at least the process in knowing so.
Even the party that's not here has to make arrangements where he or she is to abide by certain rules.
Absolutely.
So.
Disclosing location, room number, open doors, right. You know, sitting on a beach in Hawaii or something, I mean, yeah, exactly, yeah. So, but again, like Susan said, you can count the number of meetings that any one of us has missed over the course of time, so just to know there is an option if needed, but with, with due notice.
All these years we've been on council, have we ever done this?
I, I tele, I teleconference, but not for the, the city, it was for the mosquito abatement board.
Yeah, we did it at, at Seabank, too.
And Seabank does it with life.
We have members in Blythe, and that's a long drive and that, so we've done it before there. But I, I've never seen, I can't remember, I was ever doing it here.
I was in Vermont.
Oh, okay.
So I teleconference, but I know we do a lot of teleconferencing, just here locally.
Sure.
But this generally was covering people that are out of town.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So on April sixth, I could teleconference from the beach in San Diego?
There's no meeting tomorrow on the sixteenth.
Not sitting on the beach, we want you in a room.
Almost otherwise, that was me.
Kristy, did you, did you have something?
Yes, I, I just wanted to thank Susan. You, you did a, an incredible job. It was really a pleasure to work with you, and this is just perfect, it's really good.
I like it. It made it easy for us, and options, and what other cities are doing, and what state requires, and what the practice has been, and making us get to a driving point.
And I, I think that it's, I like that we're doing it, since it hasn't been done since nineteen ninety-five, and perhaps we should think about looking at this every couple of years or so.
I think as technology comes in, it's gonna require it.
Right.
Yeah, different, yeah.
But I do have a suggestion, if, if I could.
Sure, go ahead, Terry.
I've listened to, and I'm sure the rest of you have, to other council members, other councils' meetings, and one of the, the action that was taken in several of them around the state that I thought was rather sophisticated and interesting was the city attorney, or, uh, should, please. Is that better? I'm sorry. The city attorney or the city clerk will read the items in the consent calendar. I know that sounds like it's gonna take a little time, but it also, it, it lets the audience know what is in that consent calendar, and that we aren't playing around with it, and we're not burying things in it, and so I just found that it was, I thought, very, very useful, so, whatever.
Okay, Lee?
Thank you. In, in regards to the teleconference, my concern more was from a health standpoint. If one of us, from a health standpoint, can't make a meeting, for instance, my partner in business, he, he broke his neck, and he was out for six weeks. And so if something happened from a health standpoint that one of us couldn't make it, I don't know that two may or may not be enough as limitations. So if something were to happen like that, could we make exception to something like this?
Of course, always you can, always you can, with a majority vote of council, yes.
Okay. Then the, the aspect of adding items to a future agenda being either three or more, or the mayor, or city manager, and the city attorney. The, you know, I don't know, I mean, I don't know how much discussion you guys had in that regard versus, at least two council members versus a majority? And if you guys had much discussion on that item?
You can add something under this, you can add an agenda, and you can put, you can put, put an item on the agenda without consensus, as long as it's not costing the city anything monetarily, basically, when you get right down to it. So, and, and if it is, and it's gonna require staff time, or what other expenditures, then it, it's just a consensus of council to put it on.
Okay, so, one council member could add something to the agenda to bring it up for discussion, but to, to create the staff time or the resources needed, at that point, then it goes for majority.
And it's really a good idea, if you think about it, I mean, we're a wonderful council, but that may not always be true.
Sure.
And we use common sense, and we wouldn't go to staff and say, well, I want this report, and you know, blah, 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 so. But it's just, I think it protects everybody, and it's just a good thing to have on there.
Right, because i- if there is an extensive use of staff time or resources, and there isn't consensus, it, it's almost like, why, it's a waste of money, versus when it comes back as that actual agenda item, if there's not initial potential interest, or, you know, it's.
Okay, but Bill, add, just for the discussion purposes, up here before, okay, sure. And then, you know, we, we're talking about the public hearing time. And I, I would always wanna make sure that the public is, I mean, that's what the public hearing is for, obviously, for public input, and to have those meetings after five o'clock when one gets off. I, I know some of these things that come to force in a public hearing are more technical in nature, and, and there's not gonna be a lot of interest in some of these matters, but quite a few there are. And so that we are just very, very mindful to, you know, on public hearing items, that it is available from a public standpoint after five o'clock, unless it's extremely technical by nature.
And, and we did talk about that, because oftentimes, depend, depending on the development project, some of these developers are coming from, out of the area to get here, and depending on how extensive they are, or if they are minor things that are not, as we're aware, going to be quite controversial, it gives them some of that flexibility of, of maybe being put last, and the people that are waiting through a meeting, those agenda item, those public hearings might be prioritized first, knowing that there's a gathering of people. And, you know, so I think, we, we try to take all parties into consideration, but definitely to make sure we maximize the ability to have as many people here as possible, without having everything go too late. Because as of late, we had issues where we recessed our meeting to go to public hearing, and some really just relevant issues that we were dealing with on the regular agenda, those folks were waiting three and four hours before we got back to them. So hopefully, again, based on the content of the agenda, we're able to be a little bit more flexible.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely make our best estimates as to how long the agenda will go, and how early we can do the public hearing to meet the public's needs, and, and consultants, and to get you folks out.
And staff. And staff, yeah.
Good.
Thank you, that's all I can do.
Good. With that, thank you, ad hoc committee, and thank you, Susan, for putting this together and that. And with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I move adoption of a resolution amending and restating rules of procedure for council meetings and related functions and activities.
Second.
Moved in second, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to number four, and that's appoint a voting delegate to the two thousand fourteen Southern California Association of Governments gag general assembly.
I move appointment of Councilmember Henderson as the voting delegate to the two thousand fourteen Southern County California Association of Governments general assembly. My second.
Moved in second, please vote. That's okay with you, Terry?
Yeah, I'm going.
Okay, all right.
And I'm iffy.
I wanted to make sure it was okay with you. Okay, motion passes unanimously, okay. All right, we'll go back to the consent calendar item number seven, and that is to approve contract extensions with Santa Fe Building Maintenance for fiscal year two thousand fourteen fifteen janitorial services. Staff report, or, or, excuse me, maybe you wanna bring up the reason why?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number seven on the consent regarding the approval of extension of this contract for maintenance of our facilities. I know when we did this, I think back in twelve, two thousand twelve, we did this, we only had three contractors, you know, submit a bid, and all of which were outside of the valley. So there wasn't an option from a, a local vendor for this, or using a local vendor for local materials for this. So it kinda escapes a local economy, is really where I'm, I'm going on this. And, you know, I, I hate to see contract, service contracts of this nature that don't provide much benefit to the local economy, and the money's going outside the valley. And I am concerned about adding a third year onto this contract, under this same scenario. And I would rather have us, you know, we've got a two-year contract at this point in time for two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen, if I'm right, and then look at putting this out to bid again on the third year to be able to have some local vendors have an opportunity, if they so choose, and at least have an option for them, if we have to go with outside vendors, at least local materials or something, suppliers or something, to help the local economy. And I don't know if that, how much that would take for an R F P. to, to do on this contract. I don't know the timing and everything that you guys would need to put this together.
In the past, we have done contracts with a two percent preference for local contractors. I don't know if that would be something that could be used for this type of contract. The management for this contract is Santa Fe, and they are out of the Riverside area, but the workers themselves are local, so there is some local component to this contract. But they are a large company, they have several contracts throughout Southern California. But if, if we, if, if council is to, to direct us to do so, we can put out another R F P. And, and look at giving a preference for local contractors.
Is that perfect, is that two percent or five percent?
In the past, it's, in the past, it's been two percent. We did it on a landscape contract when we bid it out, probably about five, six years ago.
Okay.
I, I.
Their business must be, they could be any place where there are corporate offices, if that's what you wanna call it, someplace, but they've gotta have a local office locally. I mean, they're not bringing people in from Santa Ana or Los Angeles to come in and clean our buildings, so there's gotta be local people.
The, the actual workers themselves are local. The management company, the management does come from outside of the valley, but they have been very receptive to our meeting needs. Whenever we've called them out, they've made themselves available to drive out here and meet with us and discuss any items we may be having with the janitorial service.
But have, have you talked to any local businesses that are local here about bidding, or why they didn't bid?
No, at that time, the janitorial was not under our department, that was under the former building and safety department. So that was bid through other staff members.
And while we're talking about this, though, one of the things that, that we have to keep in mind is this falls under the H R twenty-nine resolution as an outside contractor. And I, I did spend some time talking to Frank with this, and the way this one is set up, I think, would be fine. The components, not here issues, but the components and the years and the option years, looks like it would be a pretty, a pretty good way to go. So if we're gonna make any changes, we wanna make sure that we lock in somebody else for a period of years, because we don't know, we don't know when we're gonna get hit with these new laws.
Right.
We just don't know, so.
Well, and, and I guess, while, while I support always looking at local and knowing that the employees are, given the fact that we're doing the construction of the wellness center, and this existing contract's willing to take the reduction, I'm just, I'm not sure if we go out to bid and. I'm just, I'm not sure if we go out to bid now with this temporary transition that it's going to be apples to apples on a, on a pricing standpoint out of the gate versus getting through the wellness center component and then at the next opportunity, being cognizant of the fact that we want to shore up a longer-term agreement if possible. They're amenable to make the change, give the reduction, knowing that they won't be cleaning that center until it's, it's rebuilt. I mean, I appreciate the flexibility that they're making a reduction and it's a known entity.
Okay. Well, yeah, if I, then if there's no other support to go out on a bid, then we'll leave it the way it is.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to.
I'll make a motion to approve contract change order number two with Santa Fe Building Maintenance for fiscal year 2014-15 for janitorial services in the amount of $106,370.70.
Second.
It's been moved in second, please vote. Motion passes with one objection, Mr. Osborne.
No, with council member Osborne voting no.
Against us. Okay, we'll move on to our study session, and that's class and compensation study, the final report. Terry?
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. Today you have before you the classification and compens- study, compensation study final report item. And just, sorry. Let me thank you. Just to reiterate and remind you of our purpose for embarking on this journey, we are trying to align the city's vision by more broadly defining the bodies of work that employees can do. We are basing our current study on the cost of labor as opposed to the cost of goods and services, which we have done in the past. We're looking at both private and public sector jobs. And we're taking into account both the external market data that we're receiving and internal equity. Also looking at basing salary increases in the future on successful and exceptional performance instead of on longevity. Hello? And so why are we doing this? We, it's going to provide more flexibility to meet the changing needs and the ebbs and flows of the workloads. It's going to create a higher, high-performing organization, rewarding excellence, attracting the best employees, and bottom line, improving customer service. When employees are engaged in meaningful work and recognized for their contributions in a fair and equitable manner, they are happy, and happy employees provide better service. And that becomes important when residents' only encounters sometimes are with the cus- with our employees at the counter. That, that may be their only encounter with city hall at all. So if those frontline employees are happy with their situation at work, they're going to present a good face to the public, and that's the main goal for all of us. So just to reiterate where we, where we are now with our existing structures, our current classification structure consists of forty-seven classifications and we have sixty, now we have a few more employees, sixty-seven, sixty-eight employees. The descriptions are very narrowly defined and that limits our flexibility. The compensation system is a step and grade system that has seventy-one different pay ranges with five steps in each range. There are 5% increases between the five steps and currently, we have eighty-seven and a half percent of our employees at the top step or step E of their ranges. So in order to get this into some semblance of modern day structures, we have asked the firm of Fox Lawson and Associates to assist us with a full study. As far as I know, I've been here eleven years and we've never done this, a full study like this. We contracted with Fox Lawson and Associates in July of last year and they are, have taken on the study to review the job classifications, the salary structure, benefits, compare all the data and make their recommendations. So I'd like to turn the floor over to Mr. Bruce Lawson, the managing director of Fox Lawson, who's going to spend about ten minutes reviewing with you the highlights of the study, the methodology they used and their findings, since you've already seen the report and the staff report. That way he'll have more time at the end to answer questions that you may have. I'll turn it over to Bruce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. I'm Bruce Lawson with Fox Lawson. As Terry said, I'm going to keep this very, very brief. There we go. Just talking through the process very quickly. We went through a multi-phase activity that started out dealing with the job classification structure, taking those sixty-seven or forty-seven different job classes, consolidating it down to about seventeen or so, very broad classes in five occupational groupings, installing a methodology to look at internal alignment of jobs so that when we don't have market data, we could tie positions to one another so that employees could be treated fairly inequitably across the board. We looked at market, at market data on both the public and the private side of the equation. Some of the jobs that you have within the city are very common in the private sector, and I know that was a concern that the council had expressed, so we wanted to make sure that we were looking at the, at a much broader market. Combining all of the results of the labor market assessment with the new class structure and coming up with a new salary grade structure that would make sense for the city. As Terry pointed out, your current structure is a model that, quite frankly, we were developing back in 1960. It is not contemporary, the, we, we don't see what we call box-type structures where every salary range is the same width, namely, five steps. We also noticed that with the seventy-one ranges, given the fact that you only, only even have sixty-seven employees to have more salary ranges than you even have jobs, didn't, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So the new structure was designed to really capture that. The job evaluation tool is that we've used, is called the Decision Bad Method Materials, were provided in the report, and I'll be more than happy to answer questions as we go along. The slide in front of you just simply shows the new class structure, how all of the jobs were combined from the forty-seven titles into the eighteen that have, that have been created. In terms of the market compensation study, one of the big issues that we now have to deal with in deal, in looking at labor market data is the Federal Trade Commission and the Department of Justice require that we have at least five matches for the data, so that we, we made sure that we did have good data. We have to match jobs to a 70% standard or better, so that we are comparing apples and apples to apples. The labor market was predominantly Southern California, the cities of like, like character, as well as the, the private sector. The, the big difference in terms of the salary grade structure is that the new salary ranges for what we call the A and B level jobs, which are the Fair Labor Standards Act, non-exempt level jobs, will have a 40% width from the minimum to maximum as opposed to 25%, but with the midpoint being the, sort of a key there in terms of eventually transitioning the, the system. And for the man, professional and above, the salary ranges would be about 50% wide. The, at a macro level, when we look at the overall base pay levels of your employees versus the market, there's about a 9.9% differential, your base pay is a little bit below the market. In, in the world in which we live, anything within 10% is considered to be near-market. It's not, it, it's, it's a little bit off, but not, not substantial. The recommendations to, for the new structure have a, show that you can move into the structure for about 1% of payroll in terms of your implementation costs. So it's a very straightforward implementation option. The, couple of other quick items on the benefits issues. We did look at all of the benefits that were being offered and, and quite frankly, while there are finite distinctions in certain benefits, at a macro level, you sort of look like everybody else. You're, you, you, you may offer something a little bit richer on one, on one particular benefit, but the market will offset it in another area. So the general benefit package is, is very comparable to what we see in, in the labor market. The, my understanding is you have seen the final report in detail and I'm more than happy to answer any questions and to keep the maximum amount of time available for your questions, I'll terminate my presentation. So that's less than ten minutes, I hope, Terry.
Thank you very much. And that, okay, questions to staff, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In, in your study, and one of my concerns from the very beginning was the aspect of looking at public service versus private.
Absolutely.
And, and the, and the width that has grown between the two from a compensation and benefit standpoint. How long have you been doing these types of studies?
I start, I, my earlier life, I was a city manager, but I started with a company called Arthur Young and Company, doing this type of work in 1981, so I've been doing this for a few weeks.
So that, that aspect of the gap between private versus public?
Yes.
How have you seen that over the years? Have you seen that growing?
The, if, if we go back twenty-five, thirty years, the, the, what we call the Fair Labor Standards Act, those non-exempt level jobs, the public sector historically had paid a bit better than the private sector when you looked at the total package. At about the level of an accountant, at that professional level, we started to see the pay lines cross and the private sector would traditionally be paying better than the public sector. And by the time we got to the management level of the structure, comparing relatively comparable jobs, the private sector paid substantially better than the public sector. What we have seen over the last few years, especially in California, is that those lower-level numbers have started to come closer together. Public entities for the last four or five years have been a bit more, shall we say, frugal in terms of adjusting the structures a bit and, and giving pay raises. In the reality is, the private sector was still getting, doing pay adjustments, not big ones, but there were still adjustments being made. And we've seen those numbers come closer together, but in different areas. For example, base rates might still be a little bit higher, but not as much as they used to be. But the benefit packages are starting to come closer together as in, public sector employers have started to ask their employees to, to share in some of the healthcare costs, to up the retirement contributions and so on. So there's still a bit, a bit of a difference, but it's not as big a difference.
Well, the, in the, in respect to the retirement plan, the retirement plan that CalPERS has that we all must follow, is that a defined benefit type of plan?
Well, the CalPERS plan, obviously, is, is a defined benefit plan. The private sector, defined benefit plans are very, very rare. They're, it's usually a planned contribution plan.
Exactly.
When we compare the plans, what we're not, we're not comparing the offering. What we're, what we're comparing when we look at market contribution rates, the same on healthcare, we're looking at what the employer pays for the respective benefit and what the employee share will be. And we're seeing a greater cost to employees. What the quality of those benefits are is a subjective judgment and would, involves a whole different type of an analysis. But we're simply looking at how much the city, in this case, spends to have an employee on the payroll and what the employees' contributions are toward their benefit package versus what other employers are paying and what their employees are paying.
So in your, in this analysis, which I think you did a great job, but in this analysis, where is it that you analyze public versus private?
We didn't, there's not a separate breakout per se, but we have all the, the data was there and it was compiled. But in the detailed report, there's a whole section in the back of the report that goes item by item in terms of the benefit, the benefits that are being offered, it just shows the general comparisons. It starts on, I'll give you the exact page number, at least of my, if you're, we're working off the same copies. I think it's page thirty, roughly thirty-five, thirty-eight, where we get into the retirement benefits, what the employer contributions are, and there's a fair amount of detail there and so on. But we didn't break out public and private in, in these charts.
Okay. Because I mean, my, my concern is that the, that we don't set ourselves up here where there's a constant increase in cost of payroll, regardless of the economy, regardless of the general budget, that compensation and its benefits must continue to grow. And, and thus, we, we've created this unequal parallel between the private and, and the public. From the professional standpoint, like you said, accountants or engineers or whatever it may be, there, there has, seems to be these days, a big difference between the two. Unfortunately, today, I speak from direct experience that I lost one of my CPAs to a local municipality here in the valley and, and other friends and clients of mine that have lost engineers to other cities as well because of this discrepancy. So as much as I want to pay our team as much as we can, because we have a fantastic team here at the City of La Quinta, I want to have some flexibility that when this economy dips again, and it will, that we've got some flexibility to deal with that and we're not set in stone with the structure that if we have to reduce our labor costs, you know, we, we've got the room to do that because of the economy.
If I might, just one, one point that I would hope that council would at least keep in the back of your mind, not just today, but going forward, is, as you talk about issues of compensation, and it's something I meant to talk about earlier. One of the issues that all of our clients are far coming to grips with is the changing demographics in the workforce. And I don't think La Quinta is, is any different than anybody else in this particular respect. Starting in, in 2012, the Census Bureau has been telling us for years that, starting with that period, that about eighty million people in the workforce will be eligible for retirement. Now, there's a number of us that are electing to continue and, and not necessarily walk away at the earliest opportunity. But nevertheless, there's still eighty million people currently employed in the United States that are eligible to retire beginning in 2012, and that number will get, there's a, a lot of those folks that are going to be going out over the next few years. The biggest problem is that on a national basis, there's only fifty million people in the next population group, which means that there's going to be thirty million jobs that are, the employers are going to have some difficulties filling, filling a certain number of jobs. And that assumes that the fifty million people that are in the workforce are qualified for the jobs that need to be filled. So the, the concern that I want to make sure all of our clients understand is that the ability to fill the kinds of jobs that you have, and I know over the last couple of years, this city has gone through a big change in the way you manage. You've, you've contracted out a number of functions, you, you don't have a number of the positions you used to have, but you are hiring a workforce that requires people with knowledge and skills that are not necessarily as common in the workplace or will not be as common in the workplace tomorrow as they might have been in the past. And what we're going to, what we're starting to see all over California is a real shift in the competition for the talent that you're talking about. And you mentioned engineers, you talk about accountants. Yesterday, I spent the day with the California court system, because we're doing their whole system. IT in, in certain markets, the, the ability to find those kinds of people. And even though there is that, that discrepancy at certain levels, it's, it's going to become tougher and tougher to find the talent that you need for some of these jobs going forward as the demographics in our society shift. So while we can look back and, and we do see that, some of that compression, you also have a situation where your lowest-paid employee versus your highest-paid employee, the ratio of pay is substantially compressed in the public sector versus the private sector. When we, when, when your system was built with those seventy-one pay grades, it was very easy to say that you had a ten, ten, ten times or more ratio between what was supposed to be the highest-level job and the lowest. In today's world, it's closer to one to five. The private sector is going to be substantially greater. And that's one of the issues that you're going to be dealing with as you go forward and why we wanted to make certain that your, your system gives you the flexibility. How you, how you manage those costs going forward, I think, is another issue. We have a number of clients who are saying that they're, when they look at their total compensation budget, rather than trying to manage a particular item, are looking at their total compensation budget in relation to its, as a percentage of its operating revenue so that they, if they look back over, let's say, a rolling five-year period, that we're spending X percent that you maintain, you don't increase your percentage of revenues so it doesn't become disproportionate and you manage it in those kinds of ways. As you eventually transition, the way you manage compensation adjustments will become an issue of how you're going to control those costs. I just get concerned when any organization focuses on one element of it, because all of these pieces hook together, and the demographic of your workforce will really be the driver as to what kind of retirement plan, what kind of health plan. I know we, years ago, we had a lot of employers who were putting in childcare programs. Well, now, we're not seeing an issue about childcare programs, but we're seeing a need for elder care programs. So there's a lot of different shifts in, in how the benefits are being structured. And I think it's not inappropriate for any organization to want to look at the whole package to see whether you're structuring the benefits as a whole to suit your population, and then you can start to deal effectively with those particular issues. But I think the first issue is managing that aggregate cost as a percentage of your operating.
And that, and that's something, I believe, we'll be going in the future, looking at that. So we'll be looking at our labor costs as compared to our budget, to make sure we're staying within the budget from a labor cost standpoint. One of the other concerns I have is that, you know, we're looking at a median plus two and a half percent.
Yes.
And that plus two and a half percent aspect will somewhat create a challenge between other municipalities. Well, if you're two and a half percent above the median, then I'm going to take your two and a half percent and go another two and a half percent. And pretty soon, we end up, the city manager's paying four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in this valley. And luckily, that got under some control within some cities. Thankfully, we don't have that problem. But I mean, it, it, it's crazy. Some cities that are a fifth our size are paying four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for their city manager.
I wish when I was a city manager, they were paying those kind of salaries, because I wasn't getting paid as much as I was.
Myself, but I just, I don't want to create this competitive standpoint that all of a sudden, we're paying twice as much as we should at position, because we're worried about our neighbor and what they're paying, and we lose factor the value of that position.
Yeah, and I, and that's a legitimate concern and issue that all of the, the organizations we've worked with struggle with, because we'll have clients that will say, well, we want to be at the, in, in, at the sixtieth percentile, or we want to be in the third quartile of the market, or we, whatever it happens to be. And, and those are individual decisions that each organization has to make. I think one of the things, again, and it goes back to demographics, as the, we look at the workforce today, the younger workers that are coming in versus my generation of worker, people are looking for different things. A lot of my contemporaries chose to, to stay with one employer for a long period of time. All of the studies that, that we see tell us that the younger workers, the, the, the twenties and the thirties, yeah, I can't even keep all the Generation X, Generation Y, the millennials, whatever. What, what, what they tell us is that, people are saying, we'll come to work for you for two, three, four years. We want to be challenged, we want to be paid well, but if we're not, if we're not challenged, we're, we're looking some, we're going to go do something else. You're going to have more turnover, you're going to have continued difficulties finding people. The, the issue of whether a city manager is worth four hundred to some thousand dollars is, is a, a decision that some organizations are struggling with. I happen to live in a city that, there was a big issue, and I mean, it's the sixth largest city in the country, and the flap was over three, a three hundred thousand dollar salary. If you've got somebody running a two billion dollar budget, and we look at, at salaries of people who are capable of managing thirteen, fourteen thousand employees and managing that size budget, the data will tell you that that, you know, that a three hundred thousand dollar, four hundred thousand dollar salary is, is certainly appropriate, given the, this shrinking pool of people that are capable of doing those jobs. I mean, I know a lot of people who are saying, I wouldn't go into city management, I wouldn't go into becoming a school superintendent, or any of those jobs, given the way that the jobs have evolved. But each organization has to make those judgments. And so whether any job is worth any amount of money is up to that, to each employer is to determine what the value is and where it wants to be. I think the, the key is, if you, if you're managing your compensation pa, packages as a, as an aggregate amount of money, you're defining what you want your employees to be able to do for you, and you provide them the appropriate incentives to grow and develop, and you're, you're going to have to be competitive with, within a market. And, and that's just something that, that's very different than when I was starting in, in this business years ago, when we had a lot more people to choose from. It's, I think the challenges for all employers are going, is going to be a lot greater than it used to be. So it's a, it's a tough issue.
Okay, one, one last question. The, the aspect of the, the grade between the lowest and the highest?
Yes.
You talked forty percent, at some points fifty percent.
Oh, you mean the salary range, yes, yes, okay.
Yes. Where did you come up with that forty or fifty percent range?
Looking at what the markets, the market spans are, in terms of what other employers are doing between the minimums and the maximums. Yeah, quite frankly, if we had really taken all of the market data, including all the private sector data, the upper end salary ranges would have been sixty to eighty percent wide, not fifty. We were trying to keep this thing in a, in something resembling a, a pattern that, that wasn't drastically different than what you had had in the past, but it, but it gave you some degree of flexibility. But most of the structures that we're building today have salary ranges at that lower end that are around thirty to thirty-five percent, going up to seventy-five or eighty percent at the upper end. So it's a much more of a, a clear-cut V. And the, the downside of that is, because when you get, as you spread those ranges out, people have an impression that, well, gee, everybody's going to get to the top of the range, and those upper end salaries start to look pretty high. And so we were, by using the, the fifty percent spreads, it kept those numbers within a, a reasonable, in our judgment, within a reasonable range.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Those were very good questions. Thank you.
Kristy, anything? Okay, Terry?
I'm kind of good, too. However, I kind of want to ramble for a minute, if I can, with the gentleman. Some of the, the things that are going to be very interesting is what's going to happen in the future.
Absolutely.
I think we're on the cutting edge here. And, and there's, there's just going to be so many different kinds of changes that come about that I want to make sure that we are flexible enough to bring in and adopt some of those new changes also. That, you know, they, they say, well, you know, a lot of people say, well, this is the new norm. I frankly think that this is not the new norm. We haven't gotten to the new norm yet. So I, I'm concerned in that way, if you will. I'm also concerned that, that our employees, our staff, our team, our family here totally understands the program, and hopefully, that they're all on board once we, once we get figured out what it is that they're going to get on board with. But I, I think that we'll, we'll all be in a much better situation. We know that several things have changed because of the changing demographics, but one of the big things that have changed is our change of revenue stream.
Absolutely.
And it's, it's critically important that we keep to, at the top of this, that our revenue stream has been seriously changed, and we need to adapt to that as much as anything else. So I, I, this is a, this is an outstanding document. I, I think, I don't know how far and wide this is to the state of California yet, but this, this is the way it's going to go.
Yep.
This is the way it's going to go. And a lot of areas here that I, I can't just talk about right off the top of my head is, I understand them, you know, it'll take a little while, but I think we'll get there. And, and continuing changes with CalPERS is, the only thing that's going to put a big change in CalPERS that's beneficial for everyone is legislation.
Yeah, and I think you, you, you've really hit it very, very nicely, the, in, in terms of capturing the issue. From a classification standpoint, by having much broader job classes, you're going to be able to, as work changes, people will be doing different things, but it doesn't affect, your, your classification system should be able to accommodate it for quite some time to come. That's the reality of today, is a broader, more flexible system gives you the ability to turn much more responsibly than you would have been able to in the past. The pay structure, we've said that you do need to at least look at the market every couple of years. You will probably need to continue to make some changes. This is not intended to, to necessarily lock you in for ten years. The structure itself, having watched and lived through the recession with all of our clients for the last several years, there were a, a small number who simply said, well, nobody's giving pay raises, we'll just freeze everything. But the reality is, the market didn't stay frozen. People were getting step increases, people were giving performance increases. They just weren't necessarily increasing the structures. So when we go out and look at what people are actually being paid, other agencies were doing things. Now, this is not a La Quinta issue, this is across, across the board. But what happens is, as the market is starting to come back, and with the demographic shift, people are starting to say, wait a minute, I have options. And we are starting to see those issues of people leaving employment. They're finally in a position, if they wanted to retire a few years ago and couldn't, they are. Or if they get, there's another opportunity down the street where they can go. What we do know, at least in demogra, from a demographic standpoint, is that if you're within plus or minus five percent, you're at market. You, there's almost nothing you can do to make your structure better. You're, you're so close, people aren't going to really worry about whether I'm a percent or two over or under. When you, up to about ten, people don't change jobs typically for less than a ten percent adjustment. You're at that nine point nine. So you're, you're right on the edge. You get to about a fifteen percent differential, and it's sort of like cholesterol. You need to start paying some serious attention, and by the time you get over fifteen, you've, most employers take that pretty seriously. So you're right at that point where it, it's appropriate to do something to get this thing updated so that you can adapt to the changing environment that's, that's coming. But I think if your staff stays on top of this, and I, I've been assured they are, then I think you're going to be going forward with some, the tools in place to get, keep you where you need to be.
Well, I don't doubt that at all. We, we are going to go forward, so, thank you. Thank you for listening to New Women.
No, I, this, this is, to me, this is the best part of the, of the work.
Sure, thank you. A couple of things, and I think that, you know, we are definitely, and have supported and directed the cause across the continuum in terms of doing different things with our local government here. And the people is a big piece, and it's always been an important part. When we look at our current, as Terry had reported earlier, our, our current step system, and that we've got eighty-seven and a half percent of our workforce at max, knowing that we're going to change that range and that spread with that midpoint plus two and a half, I guess we, we're looking at two different work groups. We're looking at, how do we retain the talent that we have now, knowing that we have a lot of longevity in our city, which has done us very good over the years, and that's, that's been part of what's made this, this family close? But knowing that, as that attrition goes out into greener pastures over time, and we're bringing that new generation of employees in, what's the ideal mix or percentage of folks in where they fall in those steps? How do we blend that? Because that, that clearly addresses the, the budgetary component, and, and it's, it's that balance of experienced, experienced elsewhere, because in, in our medical field, we have the same challenges with the nursing field. You've got nurses that have lots of experience that come into our environment at like ranges as somebody who's been there with experience, but they're bringing outside, which has a value versus just the longevity. And it's, it's difficult to kind of comprehend that someone else just started, but they're making a similar because they, they bring that skill set.
And we work in the healthcare industry as well, and your, your issue is absolutely appropriate in today's world. With the demographic shift, we, we tend to see a mix of the older worker and the younger worker, and that, and the question is, the expectations of those employees. In, as you transition your pay system from the traditional step-type model to something that resembles more, whether it's skill-based or performance-based or whatever, and if you use the center of the pay structure, which is what we, the ideal would be, is that you anchor your, the midpoint of the structure at the, quote, the market rate, the way most organizations will manage their compensation is they simply budget at that, at that market rate. And you can have as many people above the market rate as you have people below the market rate. So it's not a matter of, should I have exactly fifty percent above or fifty percent below, or, or what, what is that number? It's a matter of making certain that if your policy is across the board that you want to pay at that fiftieth percentile plus two and a half percent, that you're not spending more than that by having more people disproportionately above. And that's, that's a fiscal discipline, as opposed to doing line item or position control. Letting your managers manage against that, there will be some discomfort. I, I absolutely guarantee it, in terms of, of the population group that are used to having those automatic step increases over a period of time. But as, in order to break that model, at some point, you do have to make that transition. Clearly, the private sector model, steps are, when I, when we talk to our private sector clients and people who work in the private sector, they, they, I get the question of, what, what do you mean by a step increase?
Yeah. Corporate America.
It's a foreign concept.
Automatic.
Colas are a foreign concept.
Absolutely.
It is a market, if you're going to have a market-based system, the market doesn't move necessarily at the same rate as the, as the cost of living. That is a big change for most public employers. The, the mindset has, is going to be, have to be with changes. And I, I don't know that I can answer your question very specifically, that essentially you have twenty-five percent in each quartile. The reality in most private sector organizations is you don't have more than ten percent at the upper end of the scale, at, at that, quote, exceptional level. The vast majority of people, even in my own organization, if you set the standards appropriately, and they do the job that they are hired to do, paying them at the market rate, that mid, that middle, somewhere in that middle section, is an appropriate level of compensation. If you have people who truly are exceptional, then you should pay them more. And the intent is to give you that flexibility to do that, recognizing that the offset is you're going to have to have some people at the lower end.
And I think that that's like, when, when Terry says it's not the norm, it's, it's getting our heads, our staff's heads around the way it's always been, and/or, you know, the city employees have this box of, of the formula that's happened, and then looking at our opportunities to meld our existing talent into a new way. And, and they've embraced this, and are coming up with creative ways of doing things, and, and a lot of open communication, and, and just a lot of variety of discussion on, on what we want to be when we grow up as a city type of thing, and what's that vision? Knowing that we can still attract the talent that's coming forward from other places that are still in that box. And that's both concerning and exciting, because that just means that we're going to be the leaders of the pack and the early adopters of being able to pick and choose those individuals that want to be incentivized based on their performance. And, you know, I equate it, similar to looking at physicians and recruiting physicians, it used to be, you're, you're in it for the money, and you bill, and you're a millionaire and all this. Doctors coming out of school now, it's a career, and it's a quality of life, and it's, I don't want to take call, I don't want to have to do this, I want to just do Monday through Friday. I want to be able to have kids, I want to have a retirement plan, and I, I want to be able to make as much as I work hard enough. If I don't want to work that hard, then I won't make as much, and that's kind of okay. And it's, it's providing those means of being innovative, having the cross-training opportunities to advance within those bands that we're proposing, and tapping into that mindset. It's, it's, it's kind of Google-ish, I guess.
Well, but it's also the issue of recognizing that organizations, that pay structures, even though we, well, we have these new grades, that there are going to be situations where you're going to end up paying certain jobs more than their supervisors. You, you, if, in the healthcare industry, we've been seeing that for a long time. The old paradigm of, I always make more than the people that report to me. That went with the dodo bird. That, that doesn't exist anymore. I mean, jobs, the, the base rate can be there, but you may very well find that you're going to have specialties, that you're going to have to pay premiums for just to, to find those people, and that's going to create some real interesting challenges as well. So it's, it is an, that's the reason I happened to retire. I love where this thing is going, it's got, there's just so many challenges to try to make this work. We've had the good fortune of being involved in some very large-scale crisis management, where my partner is running the, the City of Detroit restructuring.
Good luck.
And with their entire class and comp system.
Wow.
And it's, you know, it's, it's a thankless deal, but at the same time, that's a good example of what can happen if you don't manage it. But at the same time, the culture shift of going from the what was to the what it needs to be is going to be a, a very radical.
And this is a, a perfect blend of being able to have that individuality of performing and, and stretching your personal abilities. and stretching your personal abilities, yet potentially looking at incentives for how the team performs as a whole. So many companies, employees don't see an increase or change or an incentive unless the entire organization hits all the marks. It's not just one area. And that metric incentive system is so much more prevalent and still offers, again, the individual performance aspect. I guess I have a question in terms of pages twenty-nine through thirty-one. It has salary data recommendations and.
Are you in the core report or in the PowerPoint?
The blue one.
Yeah, okay, page twenty-one.
Yeah, do we have to, as a group, do we have to provide any direction or the study session on those pages?
No.
Not at this time, okay.
This is for informational.
Okay. Well, I thank you for rallying our troops and with our consultants and our team and really thinking outside the box, and I'm excited to see where this continues to go. And I appreciate the employees being open-minded through the process, and we are very cognizant of making sure Frank and his crew communicate and communicate and communicate and get input, because we all have to be on board when we move this direction, so.
I'd like to thank your staff. We obviously get involved in a lot of these different kinds of projects, and I can honestly say, your folks have been as big a pleasure to work with as anybody I've worked with in a long time. They're just really very, very positive and it's, you know, we've got a lot of hoops to go through, but they've been great to work with, and we thank you all for your efforts.
My comment's very short. Terry, thank you and your staff for doing a wonderful job on this thing. It's a long time in coming, and the fact that you've worked very closely with all of our staff who've done a wonderful job during trying times, financially trying times for the city of La Quinta and what has transpired in that. And we've talked about it in the past, about the need to work with our staff and the compensation of what they have gone through to make sure that we show that we appreciate everything that they've done these past years that has really worked with us to try and make City of La Quinta the gem of the desert and that. And so I compliment you and your staff for doing the job you've done. I think this is a wonderful way to make sure that we do the proper thing to our people in the future and that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make some comments?
One thing that I wanted to just touch on briefly is that there's a, well, let's just say, all of us that are sitting here, the five of us, all come from the private sector. So we kind of have private sector mentality. And we're trying to, along with our staff, obviously they come from the public sector, we're trying to absorb this and make it work for everyone. And I'll be very honest, it's a little bit out of my way of thinking usually. And so to merge all this information and make sure that our staff is happy with it and it's going to work and, I mean, we are on the cutting edge here with this report and all that you're doing, it's amazing. But there are two different cultures, if you will, working on this. And so I know the first time that the presentation was given to me, I had questions, and then it just, our staff did such a good job of presentation last time, but I still was in that, really, we're going to do this, and that mentality. So I appreciate staff's patience with me, with us, because it has been something that I know has to happen, and I like the way it's going, and I appreciate all the hard work that you did, and staff too. It's a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that, of course, was for informational only, no action is required on that action. We'll move on to reports and informational items. First one is Linda, you want to?
Actually, I will defer to Lee. He graciously attended my SEVAG Conservation Commission and Energy Environmental. I reported on CBB last time, so other than that, I'm going to attend his homelessness committee tomorrow. You're very welcome.
Is that reciprocity?
Apparently so, although, yeah, I was in doubt he's going to be on the beach with a beer in his hand or something, so a little different. But I appreciate the effort.
Okay, Christie?
No, I have two meetings tomorrow.
Okay, all right, Terry.
Yeah, let me get them out of here. I did try to go through them this afternoon and make them short and sweet. I had a revenue and tax meeting in Ontario last week, and there's the myriad of things there that I could bring back and probably end up boring you with. I tried to pick out what I think is important. But in the governor's budget, he did allow for a discussion on lowering a threshold for voting again for any IFDs to fifty-five percent. And while this proposal does not match more flexible provisions in, to create a district league-sponsored, league-supported IFD bill SB thirty-three by Senator Louis Wolk, which had no voter approval requirement, the comment here is at least it looks like the governor is trying to think about creating IFDs, so, whatever that means. Another issue up there is Proposition fourteen, and this has been, this measure's been placed on the ballot for the June election. And what it does, it relieves the state of California for any reimbursement on mandates to, on cities. And, yeah, it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't.
So the state's going to pay for that mandate that they force upon us?
Yeah.
You really believe this?
So there was a long discussion on it, and the newspaper publishers are certainly pushing for it to go through. They think that there needs to be all kinds of transparency coming out of the state agencies and the city agencies, and that, you know, that, let me, I'll get right back to the very end of it. The staff's recommendation on this was no position. Now, you might wonder why. And the reason that there's no position is because this measure may be objectionable to many local officials. The question of what position the league as an organization should take must be carefully weighted. There is a reason that other affected local government associations have not surfaced strongly in opposition. Political reality is that absent of a strong financial commitment to campaign for this measure will be in the hands of the press, I'm sorry, campaign to reach voters and provide the appropriate contacts and background, the primary coverage for this measure will be in the hands of the press. Regrettably, there have been some additional steps have been taken to address these issues of transparency. The opposition, the league, would likely spawn an editorial circus by the supporting newspaper industry out of principle. Many local officials will likely vote against this measure, yet the organization would be far more prudent to take no position. So I think that, I think it's one that I will be certainly voting against, but, and the league has got to walk this fine line, unfortunately. And then this letter that we sent to, or that Brian sent to Frank, him saying that he did not support this HR twenty-nine. The reason I brought this is because there's a really strong, strong growing interest in these letters, really strong. And writing to the legislators that voted for it, letting them know how unhappy we are, writing to legislators who didn't support it, and letting them know how happy we are with them. And as you can see with these contracts, I mean, we have, we've got it as far as Silver Rock is concerned. That's a contract. And it's a slippery kind of deal that they've got going here. They can gut and amend late at night and slide some of this stuff through. Then Senator Hernandez introduced SB nine eighty-three, and this is a discussion regarding a card lock fueling stations. This is where there is a headquarter here, and this company, this is the DeWitt Petroleum Company, has gas stations, card stations in a lot of communities. They put their cards in, they get their gas, sales tax goes to where DeWitt is, not to the city that the gas station's in. So here, it's another one of these lopsided kind of, yeah. So what, and the reason that I brought this along was to remind you that this site is on sales tax, on internet sales tax, is a big issue. And what we did with this one, let's see, staff's recommendation, this issue, this is really important, this is what came out of the discussion. This issue represents a dispute within the local government family between the losers and the winners from such agreements. It is advisable, however, to first attempt to develop solutions within the local government family rather than inviting additional legislative exploration of the critical area law. And I think we kind of hit on that last time I did, I reported on that, but we are, we are strongly going to, because there's a lot of, there's, this is going to be very disjointed, you know, there's the company, or the cities that have these agreements and the ones that don't, and how we're going to handle all that, I'm not sure, but I told them that we don't handle it. We know people in Sacramento who'll handle for us. And if they like the way they handle RDAs, well, we can just let that go. RCTC has taken a pretty strong stance on the cap and trade sale this year, and there was a study that was done, we've made several comments on that study, and so wrote several letters back on it. And Steinberg, in the meantime, has introduced legislation that would cap, the cap and trade on gasoline at fifteen percent, but, and it all had to go back to transportation uses. So this is, he's actually working on something here that we think we can live with. And then there was a division executive board meeting last night, and after getting three or four phone calls about taking three to four hours to get the cabs on, I didn't go. And unfortunately, there wasn't a quorum. But anyway, then the next league meeting, division meeting is in May in Indian Wells. So I hope you all have set aside the time to go. And we would have taken up the new bylaws, but they didn't get approved at the executive board meeting. Then on the CV link again for the Public Safety Committee, you know, I wasn't going to report on that. There's an ad hoc task force put together to come up with some suggestions on programs to help address some of the DUI issues out here. And out of that has come two pieces of legislation by Perez, and they were introduced today for whatever, and the committee did approve moving this on to the executive board, that all the cities have this ordinance where we all think the same, do the same and march the same, and get money to do, have an educational program on DUIs. And that's all. Thank you.
Okay, Lee?
Yes, sir. First, we had the IID, Energy Consumer Advisory Committee meeting last week, or two weeks ago, excuse me, and one of the items they talked about is the power company has a mandate to be more energy efficient and reduce usage. And so they have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, eleven different programs where they're trying to be more energy efficient. Some of them are working very well, some of them are working very little, and so we went through that. It was interesting that the next item on the agenda was funding one of these programs that wasn't working very well. So why should we fund it if it's not working? And staff said, well, you're right, that's a good point, let's not, you know, let's relook at this program regarding the attic insulation. But the quality air conditioning maintenance programs is working very well from an energy efficiency standpoint. And then they talked about some of the continued increase in the capital improvements that they're making, some of which work, you know, I don't know if you remember the last time I came up here regarding Imperial Irrigation District and the fine that they have regarding when we lost power. And the infrastructure, I think that they're going to spend nine million dollars on infrastructure and relates to their fine for not having the structure for the power surge. Well, part of that is going to be, they're going to be building a huge battery system to store power that's created in the solar to help otherwise, you know? And so they're looking to spend about nine million dollars in a batteries, power storage system. But the, that's about it with IID. Then the SEVAG Energy and Environmental Resource Committee meeting, we had that, and they had a presentation on the Salt and Sea consideration and support for the Salt and Sea Restoration and Renewable Energy Initiative. Unfortunately, it was pushed through so quick that no questions were being allowed to ask. And the Salt and Sea Authority just issued a contract for over a million dollars to Tetra Tech for a study, and I was going to try to find out what is that study? But again, the whole thing went through so fast, I don't know. There is talk about an IFD on the Salt and Sea to work with some of the infrastructure needs that are needed out there, obviously, to bring it back to a healthy atmosphere. But again, there is no time for discussion on that. There was talk about support of the legislation from the Standes office regarding metal theft, and hopefully we can get his proposal through Sacramento. And then the plastic bag ordinance, just that, they're going to drop it from the agenda because it's already been dealt with, so now it's up to the cities whether they want to deal with it or not. The, yeah, neither do I. But anyway, the Coachella Valley Conservation Commission agenda, that was the big item regarding the city of La Quinta and our bighorn, excuse me, the peninsular bighorn sheep, and they gave a presentation on that. Katie Barrows mentioned an eight-mile fence that they are looking for, and that eight miles runs from the quarry around the hill, PGA West, Silver Rock, over to Traditions. And it was stated a couple of different times that Silver Rock, you know, one of the issues for Silver Rock's completion was that we would put a fence if needed. But I tried to explain, a fence around Silver Rock isn't the answer.
No.
Because she aren't that stupid to be able to go around the fence. And so I think they understood that, and.
You never can tell.
And there was discussion from Tom Kirk regarding the cost of putting up a fence, and the CBCC could help with some of this cost. Other cities immediately balked at that idea, saying, look, we haven't done it before, why should we start now? So there's some concern there. The letter that was received from the Fish and Game was dated in February, so under the laws, we have two years from the date of that letter to have something in place.
A plan.
Well, they're saying install, so there's some discussion there, and obviously we're not going to meet that. As I said, I mean, the fence isn't the answer. If the sheep herds are growing because they have food and water, we put a fence and we stop the food and water, the herds then shrink and die down, whose fault is it? And so, it is. I mean, we're going to have to get some good information regardless of the, these other groups, and. these other groups and their science that they don't always want to reveal.
Was that, was Big Horn Institute there?
Yeah, the Big, there was no comment from the Big Horn Institute.
Of course not, they did their work.
They didn't say any word at all. Um, there was, uh, one gentleman that spoke, that said, look, we understand what happened in Rancho Mirage because the sheep are coming out onto the street. And injuring themselves and the drivers and everybody else. We don't have that problem in La Quinta. We don't have a problem with them running into golfers, per se. So it is not a matter of their health or the health of the people. So we don't have the same infr- uh, the same problems that was occurred in Rancho Mirage.
But that's why I brought up that, that other suggestion.
Alternative access to.
Right, I mean, right, and exactly that. I think there's other answers to this. If we put watering hole somewhere, you know, we create some endowment that provides water and food up on the hill away from everything. You know, there, there's other, you know, solutions to this other than building a fence. And certainly, we can't do it halfway. We've got to do it the whole thing if it's going to do any difference. And trying to get, you know, the three different country clubs, the quarry, PGA West, and Traditions to all agree to put their money in the pot, I, I don't know. I don't know. And, um, so we'll have to wait and see, but we need to find out what we're going to do. We need to create a plan. Our city needs to deal with this because it's going to be forced upon us. So we need to find some solution. We need to find some science or we need to ask for some real science that really understands what our options are. And, but we really are going to have to deal with this sooner than later. And we're going to have to have a plan proposed to the CBCC that the other cities can appreciate. I don't know whether the Big Horn Sheep Group is going to appreciate it. But it's, it's something that our city is going to need to, to do in some manner or form. But hopefully, we have good science that we can, you know, work with and create a plan with.
You want my testimonial?
Yes, sir, I do. Please.
You know, I live right on the mountain. The sheep come in my backyard, but they're, they don't come in more than four or five times a year. Now, the unfortunate thing is they came down during the Humana Classic and that, and they got on TV and things like that. I just don't, you know, I just don't see them. We see them four or five times a year, they come down and feed right off the fourteenth green, and that's it. And then they're gone and we just don't see it again.
And having a drought right now, with this drought, they don't have the foliage up on the mountains to eat.
Absolutely not.
So they're going to come down here. But we better be prepared. And, and that's my concern is that we are prepared to do something and within relatively soon. So hopefully Frank and Kathy and our team can give us some answers and find out some solutions. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
May, may I do a take, Mr. Mayor, just a short on what Lee had to say? May I add something? Okay. I, I've actually heard some rumors that we are going to, someone is going to try and require us to use our powers of eminent domain, condemn the land along PGA and the quarry. Yeah, for easements for, to build this fabulous fence. So.
Really?
Yeah, isn't that nice? Um, and so it is something we have to think about. And I, I would prefer, um, I'm, I'm totally with you that they've come down four or five times a year. They belong to the Chamber of Commerce, they know that there's, you know, a golf tournament, and they want to be on TV. So they're smart, you know, they aren't dumb.
Want to get a match right here.
Yeah, so.
You get, as the environmentalists that live it in the downtown Sacramento, what do they know other than what they read?
And the other thing is that there was some comment about, well, we don't want them to become too friendly with humans and be afraid of them, but.
Are you kidding me?
But we're not out to shoot them, you know, they're not prey. And so it's, they're, they're being fed and I just think it's goofy. So, and to build a fence just around Silver Rock.
I play out there and the, the sheep are within five feet of me. They don't bother me, I don't bother them, uh, and, yeah.
Well, it all defies logic and common sense.
It's interesting.
A friendly atmosphere there.
You've got the hiking trails that they want to close off these hiking trails because they may get close to the sheep. Meanwhile, the sheep come down here into our golf course and close, so, you know, there, there is no sense, but we're going to have to.
Well. Find a way to make the cabs wherever they are.
Right, right.
Three months out of the year is going to make a difference.
Uh, I don't have anything. I, we're, we're going to have a, uh, Sunline Board Meeting, uh, next Wednesday, uh, a week from tomorrow. It's going to be interesting, uh, now that we've heard this problem with the taxi cabs and, and the independents that are coming in there and they're, uh, couldn't get people home and oh, it's a, so it's going to be an interesting meeting next one, uh, week from Wednesday. But that's all I had. So we'll move on to Department Reports, City Manager.
Have one update that came in, uh, late this morning. Uh, we received notification from the Department of Finance that they approved our July through December of this year's, or next, because ROPS, we'll put it that way. And on that, they acknowledged that while the city needs to recalculate the interest expense on the forty-one point three million dollar general fund loan to fit their interpretation of what the law is, they are allowing us to receive some six hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars or so of payment towards repaying that general fund loan. So in the second half of this year, we will get a payment of six hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars and change, which will be the first installment of repaying not forty-one point three million, but some amount less than that, close to thirty-five million. So it's starting to happen.
That's a first step. Yeah, good. That's it, Frank? A city attorney?
I have no report.
City clerk?
No additional report.
Okay, and staff, uh, there's a couple that we need to, uh, bring up. Les, you want to come up? You know, we've been inundated with, uh, the problem of noise and that, and I have another issue with traffic and that, um, how are we handling this at the present time?
Well, if I could give you just maybe an update on what transpired over the weekend as a whole, maybe the good, uh, the not so good, and we can go from there. First of all, from the positive standpoint, uh, at, at a capacity of over ninety thousand people, the overall operation went well. There were some changes with regards to taxi and what now is called Uber. That lot, which used to be near our community at Fifty Second and Madison, that was moved to Forty Ninth and Monroe. I'm so glad that happened because there were over fifteen hundred Uber cars in our, uh, in the area, and that would have been an additional fifteen hundred cars at Fifty Second in Madison. So that was all in Indio, not really affecting our community, and, and we're certainly glad that, that, that happened that way. Overall, the operation went really well. There were a couple of, uh, of issues that did come up that certainly are items that I've been in communication already with both Golden Voice and Indio about. Uh, the first one with regards to traffic, uh, I observed, uh, on Monday morning, we did have a, a conflict point at, uh, Jefferson and Avenue fifty.
Between fifty and fifty-two, I was there a half an hour.
Correct. And what happens is during what's called blowout, or that's not, excuse me, that's not blowout, that's the camping departure of Monday morning, uh, the pattern is set up to where, as it is during blowout every night, where there's two dedicated outpouring lanes for westbound Avenue fifty traffic to make an automatic northbound turn.
Right turn at Jefferson.
They used that, uh, this past Monday morning. I noticed right away, uh, on my way coming into work as well as a little bit later that morning, that that was causing a significant bottleneck of the merging of all of the northbound lanes on Jefferson to basically one lane. So I immediately contacted the head of, of Traffic Operations for, uh, Golden Voice and asked if they could please revisit that immediately. Uh, and they later that morning made a modification for just one outbound lane. And the reason why I asked for that, not only is because of our bottleneck, but because there wasn't the volume that they anticipated coming out, uh, on Avenue fifty to make that northbound turn up Jefferson. It was intended for a very heavy volume. What was happening, I think, is there was a greater split occurring in departure to where people were coming down Avenue fifty-two through the roundabout and heading northbound on Jefferson, and not as many were going through Avenue fifty. We'll certainly be talking about it at the operations meeting this coming Thursday afternoon. Uh, it's a, it's something I noticed right away, Mayor, and, uh, it's a great concern of mine that that isn't continued as we venture forward into the next two weekends.
The problem was the police department, there was one officer there and he wasn't doing anything. He had his motorcycle propped up there, but they had the, the outside lane blocked off going northbound on Jefferson at, uh, Avenue fifty. And that, and you were trying to get all this traffic merging over to the center and, but the traffic from the kids coming out of, uh, of Indio and that, they were just moving through there and it was wide open. So what we were doing, it was, we were fouling up our own citizens and the businesses that work in the community to allow the kids to get out of there. And there was not a problem with them making that right turn. And, and I, I, I just said, wait a second, we ought to have somebody there directing traffic. And what they had was the normal signal synchronization there that it would go, and it would only allow four or five cars at a time through the intersection there. But not for the kids coming up, uh, Avenue fifty, making the right turn. They were just zipping right through there and it was wide open down fifty. But Jefferson was three lanes of traffic all the way from fifty to fifty-two. And that, half an hour is what it took me.
Yes, and, and I observed that, Mayor, and that's why, as I just mentioned, that's exactly what I, what I had seen. We talked with the traffic folks, they made that change to not have two outbound lanes, so the merge was adjusted to not down to one lane, but only, uh, but only impacting the far right lane. So it was going, it was adjusted to where there were two northbound lanes of Jefferson, only one dedicated going north.
All I'm saying is it, it, it's, it really screwed up traffic in that. And we're, what we're doing is we're hurting our own citizens and, and not the kids coming out of there and that. And, and that I object to.
I fully expect a different out, uh, uh, departure on Monday morning next week, so.
After a while, there was hardly any cars coming out from the parking lots at, at the, uh, festival grounds and that. And they still had it blocked off. And, 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 and like I said, there was only one officer there and actually he wasn't doing anything. Instead of getting out there and really directing traffic and getting those things out of there, it just stood that way. And that's, to me, that's unacceptable.
Understood. That, that message I already conveyed from the standpoint of my observation, I'll reiterate that.
I've said my piece on that thing because I know there was a lot of people that were really upset about that. The other thing is we're getting all these emails regarding the noise factor. Do we ever take any sound readings, decibel readings on our side of the street to say it violates our, uh, uh, sounds, our, our decibel readings, which we have in our city that says this is unacceptable? Do, do we take those and find out whether it does or not?
Yes, we do. And Mayor, we, we knew that when we reviewed the IR, uh, that it was going to exceed, it always has exceeded our noise standards within the city. There, it, it's, uh, it's well above that. It's within the tolerance and the allowance of the permit with the city of Indio for that operation. But it's, it definitely exceeds our noise standards that we have, especially after ten PM. But that, that was, that was clearly identified in the IR. Uh, it was, it was something that they fully disclosed as they went through that process. We knew that going into it, that that was, that was going to be the case.
Are we looking at the fact that, that they're just not paying any attention to our concerns?
No, I don't think that's, that's the case at all. The issue is there are mitigation measures within the IR. And those mitigation measures are items that, uh, we need to make sure that they're adhering to. And there are a handful of key items specific to noise. And, uh, even one that's specific to low frequency noise, which is really the, the, the majority, in fact, I would say all of the, the comments that I've received since this weekend have been on low frequency noise. And the impact that's having, especially late into the evening. So that's already been in correspondence, expressing all of the, uh, comments that I've received, again, through, uh, not through the weekend, but since the weekend. Uh, there have been a handful of emails and a few phone calls. And all of that's been conveyed over to the city of Indio and Golden Voice. And I expect that we'll be conversing about that later this week and seeing what adjustments can be made for next weekend.
I, I don't know what we can tell our constituents and our citizens and that when they call me, and they call me, and I'm, we get emails and that, and, uh, they're saying, you know, what are you doing about it?
And I think the challenge is, if I could, if I could say this, uh, is there are some people in our community that it is, uh, there's, there's a definite, uh, we're all impacted to a certain degree. Some folks are, are impacted, from my observation, what I see out there, uh, it's very hard to escape the noise. Others, it's an impact where maybe they can't leave that window open for a few hours because of the noise. And it, it's all an impact, it's a matter of degree of magnitude of impact. And, and it's something that we're looking into to see what can be done to get, to try and, try and get that low frequency noise lowered.
Well, Les, let me ask you, I mean, when, when they bought that property, we were told that they're going to do different things to the sound systems. So to reduce some of this, did they change anything from the sound standpoint since they purchased the property?
I had, I have, uh, I did not spend, um, any time onsite except for a, for a brief period of time on Sunday afternoon. So I don't know specifically what changes were made. And again, uh, from the standpoint of the stage locations and what it, just general observation, there doesn't seem to be any noticeable change. But you wouldn't necessarily expect that. The changes that they've identified are more within the speakers that the average concert guard wouldn't even see. Uh, so those are, again, a question that I posed to the Golden Voice representatives is, uh, what cha- you know, how are we doing with those mitigation measures? And we did receive several complaints with regards to the low frequency noise and what's going to be done for this next upcoming weekend to help, help reduce that impact.
It was loud at my house. It wasn't about leaving the window open. I mean, I, we couldn't even go to bed until it was over. And it was the, when you say low frequency, is that that, the vague boom?
Yes, it's there.
It was like it was right out on the mat porch and it was.
Excuse, excuse me, Saturday morning at nine o'clock, I played golf on the Norman course and I could hear it, they were out there doing it, boom, boom, boom. You could hear it from Christie's backyard.
Well, and the interesting thing is Sunday night, I was out on my deck listening to it. Two mountains, you know, a couple valleys and.
So I can imagine Rancho Santana and those that are right across the street, what they're putting up with. I had a, a contact with the gentleman, Tom Casanata or something like that. And, uh, I tried calling him back, but he was really upset.
Did you talk to that gentleman?
I, I did, I spoke with him this morning.
I, I, you know, we're, we're in a quandary in regards to how do we handle this thing? Because we thought we had these things, you know, resolved and that they were going to do certain things. And they talked about the speakers aiming them in a more northerly direction rather than aiming them straight across the street and at us and things like that. And, uh, I don't, maybe they ought to build a sound wall out there.
Well, I, I was, I was going to say that, that, uh, Les' response to, to, uh, Lynn brought in Silk and who says we need to, with all the money that's being made out that he ought to go, they need to go out and put up a sound wall. Uh, which was, I mean, we've, we've dealt with sound walls around here, you know, on Washington.
And we've done it, sure.
And, and they're marginal at best. They're not going to keep the sound down.
Not, not totally, no, no.
Unfortunately, if I could, a sound wall with low frequency noise is not going, it's, it would have a nominal, um, impact at best. There's already, for example, uh, this year, uh, Lot sixteen, which is right across from Rancho Santana, intentionally has, uh, several, um, large eighteen wheeler trailers up against there. That was really intended more because Lot sixteen is used for security and they wanted to provide some, you know, some break from the, from all the vehicles there. But they're about twelve, thirteen feet in height on average. And it really doesn't make any difference with regards to dampening or minimizing the low frequency impact. It's in highs, but, but on low frequency rumblings, if you will, uh, like on a street, you can have the sound wall, but that low frequency of that large truck going by is still going to, uh, go through the sound wall and impact on the other side.
That's your observation about the weather conditions, uh, I thought was excellent. Of anything that's out there, it, it's, it's going to depend. Is the wind blowing that way? Is it blowing this way? Is it, you know, is it cold? Is it hot? All of these things are going to depend on how that music moves around out there.
And once you think you've figured it out. Because I, I do have a little bit of background in that from years past. This weekend was another mystery to me to where I was at Avenue fifty-three in Monroe Saturday evening during our, our light wind activity we had. And, uh, it was hardly, it wasn't very loud at all for where I was at on Saturday, but yet north of the venue, considerably north, Bermuda Dunes and beyond, we're hearing noise that they hadn't heard before, that we were receiving calls asking, what is going on? Why are we hearing this all the way up here? You would think the opposite with a wind that's predominantly come from the west northwest, that it would push it out towards Visas Santa Rosa. Vista Santa Rosa, towards Coachella, but for whatever reason, we were not seeing that, we were hearing that, it was going to the north.
Well, sound's gonna go three hundred and sixty degrees, some going lesser in the back. But where those speakers are projecting the sound in a forward motion, it spreads out. And so long as they have that kind of a situation going on where the speakers are and that, our neighbors to the south of the facility is gonna get inundated with sound.
So Les, I just want to thank you for all the hard work that you do and all the complaints that you take in and still maintain your decorum. I don't honestly believe that the noise is ever gonna be mitigated to everyone's or anyone's satisfaction. So on Sunday between like eight and midnight, I kept repeating, I thought maybe I should just sit in my yoga position and go, economic impact, economic impact, economic impact. You mean, it's, what it brings to the valley and to our city economically is pretty darn important. But I would appreciate everything that you can do for the noise abatement, but it's never gonna be a hundred percent. We just, it's here and we're gonna have to live with it, so.
Christie, the biggest problem is most people don't consider the economic impact. But we do and of course our businesses do and that. But how do you, you know, satisfy those that are being inundated with, those are being affected and that, and it's difficult. And, you know, you've got three concerts now. You're gonna have five before too long and then who knows what else? So, you know, how bad does it get and that before we have them coming in here yelling at us? And we've had that before.
Okay.
We'll adjust.
Okay. One last thing, Les, jumping to another thing, are you working with this food truck ordinance?
Yes, I provided the memorandum to you.
Okay, how are we coming with that? Putting something together, I notice other cities have made decisions on it and that, like the plastic bags and that. This is issues that I think we need to address and just how are you coming with it?
First of all, maybe I could really quickly just explain what has transpired. First of all, the county obviously has established a countywide ordinance and that ordinance is really more focused on the food handler side of it. And it is across the board, so it applies not only in corporate areas, but all the municipalities. So there's now a provision that requires a special permit for one year for them to have that allows for these trucks to go to special functions and whatnot and operate. And basically, it's like a trial testing period, once that year's up and everything goes well, then they have an annual permit with the county and they're actually rated, you know, the ABC rating goes with those trucks. So that's a standard throughout the county that doesn't matter which municipality, what action we take, that standard is there if the trucks are operating within the cities. I did mention in my memorandum with regards to action that was taken by, recently by Palm Desert and the activity being considered currently by Palm Springs and the City of Indio recently took some action as well. Most of the activity and what's been established has been providing great separation distance between the mobile food facilities and other restaurants within the community. That's, there's been some controversy with that, but that's really been what we've seen as the direction that most municipalities in the city that are addressing this matter right now are going. But I also point out within our own city provisions, depending on how we want to proceed with this, we already have standards established. And basically the large scale mobile food facility, the trucks exceed our provisions, which means they're not permitted within the city. So if a large, not the small food handling trucks that go to the job sites, if you will, those are, those are where a lot of these provisions are oriented towards, so the trucks that come up and honk their horn and have sandwiches and whatnot out the back, those, that's what this was intended to address. Beyond that, we don't have an allowance within our municipal code for those type of larger trucks to operate currently. The only exception that we would consider is through some type of a temporary use permit. If somebody came in, they had a special event occurring in the community, through that temporary use permit, they could get the permission to operate a food truck. So what we identified, or what I identified in my memorandum to you is, is maybe at this time, because we haven't had much interest expressed, we've had two inquiries since all of this has really gotten a lot of immediate attention. And one was for a special event down at Trilogy that they wanted to bring a bunch of food trucks in for. The other was for one vendor that wanted to set up within a parking lot right in front of a restaurant and we said, well, you just can't do that. So the recommendation from staff was maybe just to stay the course right now for a while and not take any action beyond that right now. Certainly, we would want to hear, I want to hear back from all of you as to how you feel about that. We could revisit it again in six months or twelve months, but we're just not seeing the interest being expressed currently so far.
Let's see what works in these other communities.
When we do see the interest and they come in frequently wanting permits and that. You got that article that I gave you in regards to the health and the problems that they were having with food trucks in Los Angeles? So it's one of those issues that we need to look at to make sure that when these trucks come out, that they're providing clean, healthy foodstuffs.
And Mayor, we'd always defer the food handling side of it to Riverside County, the Department of General Health to handle that, not for us to be involved with that. Because they're the experts in that area.
Well, they need to meet these standards, that's for sure.
Yes, that's absolutely the case.
Okay. Thanks, Les.
Thank you.
Okay, any other directors, comments? Tim, I've already hit. I don't need to go through that again. Okay. Our police department, fire department, we've already heard.
Say hi to the chief for us if you would. Thank you.
Tell him I'd like to see him once in a while. And that, okay, Mayor, council members, silence? Nobody has anything? Okay, then with that, I'll recess to closed session and to the successor agency, to the La Quinta redevelopment agency meeting, followed by the financing authority and the housing authority meetings and that. So we'll move on to successor agency. Here we go. Okay, at this time, I'll call to order the regular meeting of the successor agency to the redevelopment, La Quinta redevelopment agency for Tuesday, April fifteenth, two thousand fourteen. Let it be known that all agency members are present. Move to public comment, any comments from the public? Seeing none, then we'll move on to confirmation of agenda or any changes by staff? By agency members? Okay, I'll need approval of minutes of March eighteenth. Moved in second, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Move on to the consent calendar? Moved in second, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right, we'll move on to the business session and that's adopt a resolution approving bylaws and rules of procedure. Moved in second, please vote. Motion passes. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved in second, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, I'll move on to the financing authority. At this time, I'll call to order the regular meeting of the financing authority for Tuesday, April fifteenth, two thousand fourteen. Let be known that all authority members are present. Move on to public comment, any, well, we're losing our public. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to confirmation of agenda, any changes by staff? By agency, authority members? Okay, move on to approval of minutes of March eighteenth. Moved in second, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Move on to approval of minutes of, no, excuse me, move to the consent calendar? Moved in second, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Move on to the business session, we have one this evening, adopt a resolution amending and restating bylaws and rules of procedure. Moved in second, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved in second, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
We are moving on to the housing authority. I will call the housing authority meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Authority members, Adolf.
Here.
Evans.
Present.
Franklin.
Here.
Osborne.
Here.
Chair Henderson.
Here. And at this time, there will be a verbal announcement on AB twenty-three.
Board members of the La Quinta Housing Authority are entitled to receive a fifty dollar stipend to asset by section three, four, two, seven, four of the Health and Safety Code, not to exceed four meetings per month, to be paid to members in attendance at every convened housing authority meeting.
Thank you. Confirmation of agenda, any changes by anyone? Seeing none, approval of minutes of March eighteenth. Please vote. That motion carries unanimously. Consent calendar?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Business item, adopt a resolution amending and restating bylaws and rules of procedure. We have a motion in a second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. That works for me. We are here.
Just for clarification, the closed session is on agenda item, closed session number one.